Hello, it's Wednesday, October 6, 2021. It's a regular meeting of the Pacific Grove City Council called Meeting Order. Nice to see everybody here. May we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Pete?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Emilio?
Here.
Coletti?
Here.
McAdams? Paduri?
Here.
Tomlinson? Seems everyone is present with the exception of two councilmembers at the moment. Oh, here comes Councilmember McAdams now. Councilmember McAdams, present. Here. And Councilmember Tomlinson.
Present.
Thank you.
Our first... Good, thank you. Our first order of business is AB 361, which allows us, we have to make a resolution to meet virtually. Ms. Candell?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, staff and members of our public. Governor Newsom signed AB 361 into law on September 16, 2021, effective on October 1, 2021. AB 381 extends the provision of the governor's executive orders N 2920 and N 3520, and is effective until January 1, 2024. It amends the sections of the Brown Act to allow legislative bodies to continue to hold teleconference meetings during a state of emergency if the legislative body finds that as a result of the proclaimed state of emergency, meeting in person would present imminent risks of the health or safety of attendees. Assembly Bill 361 requires the city within 30 days of holding a virtual meeting for the first time in every 30 days thereafter to make findings ratifying the state of emergency. The City Attorney's Office has prepared the resolution that is attached to this agenda report. It will affect, have effect for only 30 days. After 30 days, the council will need to renew the effect by resolution or adopting another or ratifying it. If no action is taken, then the resolution shall lapse. Staff's recommendation requests council to approve a resolution authorizing remote teleconference meetings of all city legislative bodies for the following 30 days in accord with the Ralph M. Brown Act. This concludes my staff report.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
It seems we have a couple of hands raised. Mr. Bob Oliver?
Welcome.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir. Are you calling to speak on teleconference, remote teleconference?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
We should have our city halls opened up as quickly as possible, and that should be the main purpose of why we have government representation with the people, by the people and for the people. And my question is, for example, how many people are now signed up to the Zoom? Do you have access to that number?
Mr. Oliver, we don't answer questions during public comment, sorry.
You can't tell me how many people are on the Zoom site at this time?
If you, we'll send you, if you send us an email, we'll provide some information to you after the meeting.
I see, okay. I think you understood my comment. I don't think the Zoom works for us out here in the public. We'd like to be there, supporting whatever we can with one another, and it's very difficult over this phone conversation when you can't tell me how many people at our meeting. I could see it if we were all in the same room. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
I have Jan Stewart. You have the floor.
Welcome.
Jan Stewart, you'll need to unmute.
Thank you. There I am. Greetings. I'm, I'm calling in because I wanted to discuss the elm tree. I don't know if this is the point discussed.
No, it's not. You have an opportunity during general public comment.
Okay, thank you.
Prefer, okay. All right, we'll bring it back to council.
It looks like we have two more speakers. Mr. Mayor, Lisa Chiani, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. I would just like to say, I totally understand Bob Oliver's comment, and I appreciate that. And, and I do appreciate also that, as I understand it, the city is considering that when they do go back to in-person meetings, they will be hybrid. I certainly hope that happens because as, as frustrating as it can be not to have a sense of who else there, it, it's so many more people can, can participate when, when we can do it online or, or on the phone. So this, this has been one good outcome, I think, of COVID, as if there can be a good outcome, but so, but I do want to say, I totally understand Mr. Oliver's comment as well, because it can be very difficult and frustrating for people who, who aren't comfortable with, with technology as it is today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Inga Lawrence and Doimer, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I really, well, and the Governor. I really appreciate the ability to at least, most of the time, hook into meetings and be able to see them on Zoom. Yes, it would be lovely and helpful if we could see how many other participants as you can, but we can't. That would be lovely. And I do encourage, same as Lisa was saying, hybrid, because I can't go to City Hall right now. Health problems, and I appreciate the fact that we can participate remotely and as long as necessary, but we need a hybrid afterwards and technology that works. Case in point, BID meeting today had a wrong Zoom connection, and it's very frustrating, Ben. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we have 31 members of the public on this Zoom meeting.
No more public comment, Mr. Mayor.
All right, bring it back to council. Any discussion? I would happy to hear a motion as well.
Move approval, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Councilmember McAdams?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I would like our City Attorney, if possible, can you speak to even when we go back into in-person? Is there a requirement that we do be a hybrid format of a meeting? And if so, for how long? Or is that included in the, in the 30 days that, that we approve? Thank you.
There is no requirement of law to do a hybrid, but the, until you, as long as you are enacting this measure, then you can have the circumstance where councilmembers are not required to be present. Once council member, once you no longer pass the resolution and councilmembers are present, you are free to have, have a hybrid meeting if you choose, meaning that people could call in and people can hear what's going on as long as the technology will support that.
Thank you. And then a follow-up question, I guess, to our City Manager. Are our council chambers, are we prepared to offer a hybrid meeting to the public if and when we go back to in-person meetings?
Councilmember McAdams through the mayor. Yes, we are prepared. We would like to do a dress rehearsal with a subset of the City Council in advance, but we are prepared to do so when the council feels comfortable.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Without further discussion, may we have a vote, please?
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Emilio?
Aye.
Councilmembers Coletti?
Aye.
McAdams?
Aye.
Paduri?
Aye.
Tomlinson? Mayor Pete? Thank you. Mayor Pete, thank you.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll turn to Mayor Pro Tempore Smith. Please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Your Honor. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the republic under God,
Hey, I have the motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion to approve the agenda, Your Honor.
And a second?
I'll second that.
If we have a vote, please?
Members, Emilio?
Aye.
McAdams?
Aye.
Paduri?
Aye.
Tomlinson?
Aye.
Mayor Pete?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Coletti?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Ms. Candell, would you please put the proclamation, or at least the top part of the proclamation on the screen? Could you do that for us?
Yes, sir.
Well, and I'm gonna talk while you're doing that. So, um, what I've put together and at the urging of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Task Force is Proclamation for Indigenous Peoples' Day, which is the second Monday in October. That is a recognition given by in many other agencies. And this complements November for Pacific Grove as Alone Coast to No and Esseline Nation Native American Heritage Month. Of course, the OCEAN Tribe is our indigenous peoples. And I urge you to take a look at it. It's in the packet, and our city clerk has posted that to the council webpage as well. So that's just the top of it. Now, I won't spend the time reading. We've got a full agenda, but please take, take a look at it. And this recognition, long, long overdue. Next, I will turn to council and staff announcements. Mr. City Attorney?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. This is a report on the closed session that was held on the 15th of September. There were two items in closed session conference with legal counsel concerning Mark Iñadi versus Pacific Grove. In closed session, the City Attorney briefed the council regarding the complaint and petition, and the action was relates to property owned by Mr. Iñadi at 212, 214 and 216 Fountain Avenue. Upon motion of Councilmember Emilio, seconded by Councilmember McAdams, the council did authorize defense of the matter and instructed staff to refer the matter to the latest law firm of Nolan Hammerly Etienne and Haas for that defense. That was a motion that was carried on a six to oh vote. Mayor Pro Tem Smith was not, was absent for that vote. The second item was another matter of existing litigation, Blue Wave Enterprises versus City of Pacific Grove. Again, the City Attorney briefed the council on the matter that had been filed on August 25th for petition for writ of mandate. It relates to property at 176 Central Avenue. A motion was made by Councilmember Emilio, seconded by Councilmember McAdams, to authorize defense of the matter and instructed staff to refer the lawsuit to the San Francisco Law Firm of Shoot Mahoney and Weinberger to be lead counsel for the defense. Again, Mayor Pro Tem Smith was absent from this. The motion did carry unanimously on a six zero one vote. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, do you have any announcements?
Mr. Mayor, yes, I do. I just want to thank all of the city staff who were involved in our inaugural staff training day this past Monday, October 4th. In particular, I want to thank Letitia Libian, Dan Go, Kathy Madalone, Audrey Cray, Mohamed Kasimi, and members of the business community who all pitched in to make it a very successful day. Thank you very much.
Councilmember McAdams?
Thank you, Mayor. And I have three announcements. The Community Day of the Dead Altar is up at Artisanic Gallery, and members of the public are welcome to bring photos of loved ones or other offerings to leave at the altar during the month of October. Speaking of October, this month is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. With the pandemic, many women have neglected healthcare and taking care of themselves. So just a reminder to please make your appointment for your annual mammogram. Breast cancer that is detected early on is very treatable. And lastly, I would like to recognize and congratulate Councilmember Tomlinson on her retirement from the United States Naval Aviation after 21 years of service to our country. Congratulations and a heartfelt thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Councilmember Paduri?
You're muted, Councilmember Paduri.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I have one, one announcement. As a lot of you folks may be aware, the city has established the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Task Force. We've already conducted a couple of meetings. The next meeting that is coming up is on Monday, October 11th. And one of the agenda items that was proposed from a previous meeting was around the Feast of Lanterns. I encourage the community to participate in this meeting to help shape the course of the Feast of Lanterns, among other diversity, equity and inclusion items. Thank you.
I have two announcements. The short one is that there will be the Annual Butterfly Sanctuary Tour at tomorrow, Thursday, starting at 2 o'clock at the, I believe it's the Grove Acre Avenue entrance of the sanctuary. And my, my second announcement is that myself and council have received a lot, a steady stream of correspondence asking us to rethink the decision of save the elm tree in Jewel Park. And I think my reaction has been that this outpouring of response from the community indicates that perhaps for many people, it's more than just a tree. And so I hear you, and I'm asking our City Manager to please hold off, hit pause on removal of the elm tree until council has, has an opportunity to consider its past decision. And I hope my colleagues on council will support me in that. And without further ado, that ends announcements. Move on to general public comment. And please, if you're interested in making public comment, please indicate so now, so we can see how many folks we have tonight.
The number is climbing, Mr. Mayor. It's at 13 right now. I will allow, Mr. Kelly Nix, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Good evening, councilmembers. This is Kelly Nix. You know me as a journalist, and I've reported on this city for 17 years. Tonight, I'm speaking as a Pacific Grove resident. Addressing the council is just about the last thing I wanted to do, but I felt it was necessary. In June, the City Council voted to table the idea of adopting a code of conduct policy to hold members accountable for their actions. Mayor Peak and Councilwoman McAdams were among those who voted to shelve the idea. The proposed code of conduct states, among other things, that officials will not be disrespectful toward the public. Tonight, I am urging the council to revisit the code of conduct issue and eventually adopt such a policy. Here's why. In a recent Facebook post for hundreds of people to see, Jenny McAdams called a resident, quote, creepy, a lonely man, and claimed he was obsessed with her. In a recent email message, McAdams called the local woman's comments, quote, naive and privileged. Had such decorum rules been in place, perhaps Jenny McAdams, in her official capacity as a councilwoman, would not have called me, quote, "an ignorant white man", a term that essentially amounts to a racial slur. She also said other hurtful, hurtful and offensive things in the email message. She did not apologize. Attacking someone's immutable characteristics is absolutely unacceptable, no matter what their race or ethnicity. Racism is wrong, period. It should be obvious, but elected officials should treat citizens with respect. Yes, they should be held to a higher standard. Yet that has not happened in Pacific Grove. Mayor Peak has shown no interest in addressing the comments McAdams made against the two citizens, nor the comment against me, none. Where is the leadership? When Peak have stepped in, had someone else directed a slur toward a person of color? Who knows? But because of this lack of leadership and accountability, it's apparent that this council, more than ever, needs a code of conduct. Insults, bullying and other personal attacks against residents, including journalists, are completely unacceptable. Please approve a code of conduct policy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lila Selden, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Good evening. I'd like to request to please bring back the decision on the elm tree in Jewel Park for reconsideration. A substantial number of citizens support protecting our beautiful, healthy and mature trees through social and print media. Our sensitive climate needs and the health and well-being of our fragile environment deserve a more scientifically-based, informed, enlightened policy for our trees. We need a city policy that supports, supports a sustainable, long-term tree management plan that is in line with our climate change needs globally. This local plan should respect and honor our trees, their canopies as one of our critical natural resources and habitats. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Jan Stewart, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Hello, councilmembers. I have a couple of issues I'd like to mention. The first is the elm tree in Jewel Park. I am currently the president of the Rotary Club of Pacific Grove, and we do our best to support a lot of community activities in the community, one of which is environmental topics. But the elm tree in Jewel Park, it appears that some information the council was given regarding the health and the risk assessment of that tree was incorrect. The council really needs to bring the decision about the life or death of this 100-plus-year-old PG elder back for reconsideration. The other thing that needs to be addressed is how the trees in our community are treated. We would like to see, or at least I would like to see, a change in the process. We'd like you to stop cutting tree roots to realign our sidewalks to accommodate and realign our sidewalks to accommodate our beautiful trees. Please let the elm tree live. And the second topic that's on the agenda tonight that I saw, I just want to comment on as well. I found it, I find it absolutely outrageous that the mayor and city council are even thinking about giving themselves a 100% raise and a pricey extensive health benefit while our town has not yet begun to recover from the COVID pandemic. I think that we need to be focusing more on getting our community back up and running again, and that if any sort of raise or benefits are considered, that they be reasonable and attuned to what normal business practices might be. I had a long career in corporate America, and generally raises came in around 3%, maybe with a bonus. So I think a 100% raise of any kind is absolutely outrageous, and I recommend that the council not vote for such a thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa Chiani, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. I want to express my appreciation for some of the amazing stewards of PG's Trees and Tree Canopy. Patricia Purwin and her husband Charles Schwartz appealed Public Works Plan to destroy the beautiful elm tree in Jewel Park, which would be a huge loss to the community. Community members held a lovely blessing ceremony for the tree last week conducted, conducted by Patrice Vecchione, who wrote two insightful articles in The Herald the last two Sundays. This followed the planning director's decision not to, quote, "interpret the elm tree removal as development as defined in the LCP" and failure to recognize the LCP's policy to protect tree canopy. Rebecca Lee courageously brought attention to the plight of the tree after the majority of the council, based on limited and in part inaccurate information, overturned BNRC's vote to protect the elm. Public Works was not clear in explaining to council that the city arborist's high-risk determination was based on the scenario of cutting the roots of the tree yet again to accommodate the sidewalk. Reasonable and preferable alternatives were not given due consideration. And as Councilmember Coletti pointed out at your September 15 hearing, the public's concern about this tree should have opened up an opportunity for the city to explore more creative solutions, many of which are listed in the city's urban forestry standards. The city's ordinances regarding high and moderate-risk trees seem to have been disregarded, and experienced and respected arborists have reported that the tree is not in poor condition. Do community members have to resort to the court system to enlist the city's cooperation? The city needs to learn how to take better care of its trees. On another topic, I appreciate the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Task Force's recommendation to the mayor to proclaim the second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day and their request to forward their draft proclamation to the Alone Coast to No and Esseline Nation for review and editing. Some of those edits were included in the mayor's silent proclamation tonight. I hope someday the city can acknowledge in their proclamation that following the, the arrival of Europeans, California Indians forced from their ancestral lands here and elsewhere and into starvation and illness have endured a long and well-documented history of oppression, violence, displacement, enslavement, forced assimilation and religious conversion, discrimination, and worse. I hope future proclamations will not edit out the resolve that Indigenous Peoples' Day reflect upon the ongoing struggles of indigenous peoples on this land to restore their culture and protect their ancestors' remains disturbed by development. I appreciate the step forward that this new proclamation represents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Haydo, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate and, and back up everything that was just said by the last few speakers. And I just want to remind the council that from the council perspective, all the way up to the President of the United States, your job as an elected official is to represent the people. And I think that what you're hearing from the community of Pacific Grove is reflective of what Mayor Peak said at the beginning, which is, please just take a pause. Take a pause and revisit your decision based on the fact that you're getting overwhelming response from your community asking you to represent them. And what we're asking is for a little more creativity, a little bit more research, and a little bit more community involvement in making this decision on the elm tree. Thank you.
Thank you.
831 with the last numbers, 465, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Telephone number 465, you have the floor.
Greetings, Mayor Peak and councilmembers. Although we disagree over some points concerning the elm tree in Jewel Park, I think we can all agree that she's been quietly benefiting our community for approximately 100 years in ways too numerous and complex to explain. in ways too numerous and complex to explain in this short amount of time. So I will suffice it to say she's been working hard for Pacific Grove long before most of us were even born, and yet you, in your short term in office, wield the power to end her life based on incomplete information you've received. For example, please know that you've seen a misrepresentation of her alleged uplifting of the asphalt. Having lived across the street from Jewel for eight years, I know that asphalt upliftment place well, and it was not actually located near this particular tree. The photo that depicts the elm tree's so-called root collar decay can more accurately be described as an abrasion common to urban trees that push against the curb, and that that abrasion is already showing signs of new bark growing back over it. At the BNRC meeting of August 17, the elm was designated a moderate risk by the city arborist and a candidate for mitigation rather than removal. And yet, at the city council meeting of September 15, the elm's risk status was elevated to high based on hypothetical root pruning that has not and should not be allowed to occur. I'm not asking you to take just my word for any of this, but the word of Hal Lee, a tree specialist with 60 years of local experience, and Frank Ono, the former city forester of Pacific Grove for 17 years, who has a longstanding knowledge of this tree, both of whom have signed sworn declarations that agree with what I've told you. Mayor and city council, you've made an error in judgment that carries dire consequences for a beloved and venerated living being. But you can redeem yourselves by rescinding your decision. Thank you. And husband will now be speaking.
Yes, this is Charles Henry Schwartz, and greeting Mayor Peake and City Council. Two decisions have been made thus far about the elm tree in Jewel Park. The first decision to uphold an appeal, father, my wife, and myself, was made by the BNRC on August 17 after an accurate presentation of the facts by both sides, followed by questions to the city arborist. The second decision to deny our appeal was made by the city council on September 15 after a presentation of disputable facts was made by Dan Ho, with Dan Go with all input from the city arborist, and in spite of overwhelming support for the elm during public comments. I have a little more to read here. We strongly feel this second decision should be rescinded based on the health, as stated in sworn declarations by Hal Lee, a tree specialist with 60 years of local experience, and Frank Ono, the former city of Pacific Grove forester for seven years, both 17 years, 17 years. Both of their opinions contradict that of Dan Go and Albert Weishaw. It is imperative, therefore, rescind your decision and save the life of this beloved American elm. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jill Kleese, you have the floor.
Much. It's been a while since I've been on here, folks, and that's because, thank you, Jenny McAdams, for bringing up Breast Cancer Awareness Month, because I just completed my third diagnosis of breast cancer in six years, so it's near and dear to my heart recovery in this month and what it represents the women and men, too, that we've lost through breast cancer and the ones that we hope to save. And to that point, if you Google me, Jill Kleese, you will see not only some lovely photos of Pacific Grove and my dad, the World War II hero, but also some tips for breast cancer survivors on how they might get through their entire breast cancer experience. And I'm here to be an advocate. I have been selected as an international advocate for Genentech. I was hoping to do something for the city and to mention that, and hopefully Ben Harvey will give me a jingle, and that will still come through. To the other point, and I took very strongly the suggestion of Mr. Nix, and it just to me is a no-brainer that we should have not only diversity of inclusion, but something that I would think would come without saying of code of conduct. I have heard these slurs, and I have wondered, how does someone that I hold to a higher code of ethics do that? Because that does not seem right, and at the very least, an apology should be in place. And if somebody is accused of something, no matter what it is, if they don't deny it, then it does make the public question, was it true or was it not? And we all know what I'm talking about. Just say that's not true, and then uphold the truth, because that's what we are doing, and I hold all of you, and I hold myself too, to a higher standard of ethics. And about the tree, I gave hopeful pause when I heard Mayor Peake, and I'm confused a little, thinking that the pause was going to take place to do look at the tree and how we might work together to save it. I mean, trees are special here. I love them, and we need to work around the sidewalk and the issues. Let's hear both sides. I know Chap Spadore, when we were running for city council, he also supported transparency with me, and it's very transparent that we need to be heard. I'm curious how many people wrote in, how many people called. That number I don't know, but I really would like you to work with us, because that's what we said for the 2020 election. That's what you, our elected officials, promise to do, and please do that for us. And just follow everything I learned, I learned in kindergarten. Those are one of my golden rules, be nice to other people. And if we have to have a code of conduct to do it, let's do it. It should be self-evident, but maybe some things are not always self-evident. Thank you for your time. Hello again, and happy recovery, hopefully to everyone out there struggling with what I have struggled with.
Inga Lawrence and Doimer, you have the floor.
Thank you, Sandra and Mayor Peake. In light of public outcry, erroneous information presented to council by staff and other assessments, I would ask the council to please agendize this matter so it can be reconsidered as far as the elm tree goes. I appreciate that. It is time to reconsider best practices on how we deal with trees, same as sea level rise, global warming, all of these things that are so very, very, very important, wildlife. It's a different world. It's time to change in that way. And I would also ask council to please direct staff to provide story polls and/or balloon equivalents, anything, for the ATC project and release hard copies of the ATC plans to provide transparency and public outreach and participation. My health issues prevent me from acting the one hour, one person available at City Hall in the conference room for its one-hour appointment. That is not the way to have the public be aware, participate, and make decisions for their city. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anthony Chiani, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Peake and members of the city council. I hope you got that last-minute photograph I took of a beautiful tree. It's across the street from Berwick Park that's edging into the sidewalk, and it's been accommodated. And that its canopy has been accommodated. I think canopy has been overlooked in the discussions of the elm tree. I'm moved by what I've heard from other members of the community talking to you. I'm moved by Mayor Peake's comments earlier about thinking about revisiting the elm tree issue. To have to seek judicial review of this is a shame. We live in such a wonderful community, the last hometown. I think all of us appreciate being here, and I think it's really, really important that we gather together and resolve this in a kind, peaceful way. On another subject, the American tin cannery. The municipal code 239160, hate to cite it, but I have to. Section 1C says there's supposed to be a site-specific illustration and analysis, and that includes putting ribbons around the trees. There are 79 trees there that are being proposed to be removed. Please put the ribbons around the trees. The ribbons will announce to the public who are visiting Pacific Grove, who live here, that those trees are destined to be killed. Please put the ribbons up. As far as the illustrations that are at the site and the ones that are at the library, the ones at the library, the height of the 40-foot buildings is, if you measure it, is about an inch and three-quarters high. The height, the length of the building that's about 400 feet or so long, measures about 12 inches. How can you look at an illustration that's about a foot long and an inch and three-quarters high and interpret that and be able to judge that and evaluate it in terms of its full-size, real-life impacts on the neighborhood? We need story balloons. Hello, I don't think there's a lot of hazard there. Please ask your city building official to evaluate the danger of balloons. Mount them, photograph them.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chani.
Donna Braden, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, city council, for being public servants and listening to the public. I, too, am here just to urge you to consider, to strongly urge you to consider all the aspects regarding the elm tree and the other trees the man just spoke about with the ribbons, and how important trees are to our town, the planet, in so many ways that, like was mentioned before, it goes way beyond the scope of the three minutes. I do stand with the tree and believe that there are so many options that should be looked at first, and that's what I think your job is, is to consider all the options before coming to a final conclusion if it comes to destroying the tree. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Carla Bitter, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Oh, good evening, everyone. And thank you, Mayor Peake and city council, for this evening and for reopening the discussion regarding the elm. Just on behalf of the Museum of Pacific Grove, National History Museum, we've received a lot of inquiries, asking, do we have historic photos or historic context for the elm tree? And quite frankly, we don't. And so it's been interesting to listen to the public and handle those comments, and we're certainly there as a resource to look at the history of the park and the history of the tree, but there's not a lot of photo evidence. So just kind of putting that out there for public consumption. And also to kind of correct the record, perhaps a few weeks ago, someone suggested that leaving the tree would somehow create a situation where there would be reduced parking, which would impact the museum, and the museum certainly doesn't share that opinion. So it's, just want to kind of set the record straight that, while all well and good, that's definitely not something that is of top-of-mind concern. And I certainly want to thank the mayor for the indigenous statement and dedicating this month to awareness and outreach, and we're happy to promote that in our own social media. Because you're reopening this discussion, I would also like to offer the museum as a place for discourse. I understand that we won't be meeting in person for quite some time for city council, but the museum is open and functioning and is certainly a wonderful place to gather, to discuss these issues in the event that the city council and the mayor would be interested in that. And I just wanted to put that out there and thank everyone so much for their service and their comments this evening on this and other topics.
Thank you.
Michelle Magdalena Maddox, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Hello, and thank you for holding this extra comment period for the elm tree. My name is Michelle Magdalena Maddox. I've been a resident in Pacific Grove since I was 11. I'm now 35. That's a long time. But I just want to say that I feel like, as a, first of all, I did want to acknowledge how grateful I am to live in Pacific Grove and on Esselin Territory, and I'm really grateful that there are movements to celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Month and Day this year and for years to come. And I also wanted to make a comment about the elm tree, that I stand with keeping the elm tree and supporting our trees and replacing trees that have been taken down. I live within a block of the elm tree, and since I've lived in this apartment for the past five years, we've lost three major trees within my viewing distance of my apartment, and it really makes a huge difference in the community to have the trees and their presence here. And although trees have been removed, they have not been, you know, you cannot replace a 100-year-old tree. So even if my neighbor did plant a cypress tree, I know that they don't want that tree to survive, and who knows if it will. So I hope that the city takes these older trees and their lives with deep respect and regard and making it, doing anything they can to keep them alive and being creative about the ways that we do build our sidewalks to keep them alive. The children's park over by the post office has a number of trees that are on what would be considered a sidewalk, but it makes that part of Pacific Grove so charming and one of my favorite places to take walks. And it really brings the community vibe up. And also, I just wanted to mention that Pacific Grove is supposed to be a tree town or Tree Town USA. And I'm not quite sure that we fall under those qualifying guidelines anymore. And it's obvious that our community takes great pride in the trees and the presence, and I wonder how we can all come together and celebrate that with more pride and creating more community around these issues will only make us stronger and a more vibrant place to live for everybody. The other thing I wanted to mention in closing is just that I feel like there's a lot of new buildings in town, and I just think that we have a lot of empty buildings still that deserve more attention, and I'd appreciate more parks than new empty buildings. Thank you so much for your service, city council, and I appreciate this time to speak. Hope you all have a very good evening.
Thank you.
Gigi PG, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Sorry, it took me a minute. I just wanted to thank you for your consideration of the tree, and a couple of you have responded to my emails, and I really do appreciate that. And Jenny McAdams, I did research all the sources that you gave me, including listening to the BNRC meeting. And I have to say that I still think that the city needs to take a little pause on this, and it's the same reason that other speakers have mentioned in terms of the community outpouring for this topic. And one suggestion I might have is some mitigation procedures. Someone suggested going ahead and replanting a tree and keeping this one and seeing how it grew. One reason I would say that is that I read a lot about the American elm and what an iconic tree it is, has been in the country, and the devastation of the Dutch elm disease. And there's a proceeding that is requesting cities who have a healthy Dutch elm to notify to notify them so that they can monitor them. So this is something I think we should consider with this particular tree. And the, you know, the names of the museum and the library have been bandied about quite a bit about parking. And I was really happy to hear Carla's comment about parking and that I think essentially the feeling is that parking does not override the importance of a tree. The last thing I want to say is I believe the council members have an obligation to their constituents to bring them along in understanding. When there is so much controversy, it is obvious that there needs to be more dialogue. And my goal was to allow time for this. In addition, you may not yet have all the information that you need to best serve the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dixie Lane, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm gonna just take a little left turn right now on topics. And I just wanted to, again, invite everyone to come to the walk-through at the Monarch Grove Sanctuary tomorrow afternoon at two o'clock. I know that it's a workday and it's hard to get away, but those of you that are available, that would be wonderful if you could make it. Secondly, I have a question that I know you can't answer tonight, but I hope that those from council and staff that come tomorrow will come with an answer. And it's regarding the city's municipal code, Title twelve on Trees and Vegetation. And it includes regulations on the protection of the monarch butterfly habitats. And section twelve point sixteen, which twelve point sixteen point two-five-oh is on the monarch butterfly habitats and how they're protected. It says that on August eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one, this section of the city code, the municipal city code, was repealed by code twelve seventeen. I have looked high and low and to try and find out why this was repealed. I couldn't find anything on a July, August, or September agenda. And I don't know why, because it is critical to the management of the Monarch Grove Sanctuary. These codes or this code in particular notes that the two habitats are the Monarch Grove Sanctuary and the Washington Park Site. And it talks about what it takes to prune or remove trees in these designated overwintering sites and how they need to be protected. And particularly that any work like that is prohibited during the months of October through April. And we all knew that. And this, all this language has seemed to disappear out of our code. I do, you know, I know it's something that the California Department of Fish and Wildlife was adamant about in when they supported our purchase of that and they took the easement. But I don't know if I just don't know how to navigate well enough through the code. But I certainly can't find anything. And if you could just point me in the right direction or explain to me why this was even removed, I'd appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Dixie, I'll follow up with you on this.
David Hollingsworth, you have the floor.
Welcome.
You'll need to unmute yourself, Mr. Hollingsworth.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, that was on mute, apparently. Yeah, I've been engaged by the people who are interested in the tree. And what we need is more than a pause, really. We need to call off the dogs and reconsider and stop the the rush to judgment on this thing. Our people have spent a lot of money, time, and effort on experts. It's not a, for example, we have written reports available which show and that these are by the most distinguished arborists and florists in the community and the most experienced. Mr. Ono was seventeen years with this city and he knows every nook and cranny. Mr. Lee of Hal's Tree Service has also been with the city. And they unequivocally come down with the following conclusions. The tree is in a completely more healthy state than that represented at the last city council meeting, considering this. So what we have here, we have reports in writing that are available that tell us that the tree is much more healthy than you've been led to believe, that it benefits the area around it as well as itself with its magnificent canopy. And then the people who know how to do this suggest, not only suggest exact means of of preserving the tree and enjoying it, but that they point out the specific other areas in Pacific Grove which have adopted methods of protecting the sea, the trees against the sidewalks, the curb and gutters, rather than the opposite. So what we have here with this present decision is we have the tail wagging the dog. So in the in the long run, if people are interested in this, they should read those written reports. I think Mr. Lee's is very brief. Mr. Ono's is about four page, four pages. And they also refer to the existing statutes, the ordinances and policies, written policies of Pacific Grove. And for example, let me just read you one interesting comment that, of course, was avoided carefully in the proceeding where somebody is interested in killing this tree. Quote from the ordinance thirteen dash thirteen, section three.
Mr. Hollingsworth, I'm sorry, three minutes has elapsed. We've got other people also waiting to speak. Thank you for your comments.
Would you like me to finish?
I'm sorry, we need to move on and let other people also speak.
All right.
Please, you can send any reports to citycouncil@cityofpacificgrove.org.
Carol Marquardt, you have the floor.
Welcome.
I'm mute. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Peak and City Council. I do want to take a right turn instead of a left turn. I really enjoyed the variety of responses tonight. I've been listening to everybody. And some of them are very emotional and some of them are very factual. And I'm sure all of them are sincere. However, if I had a tree like this in front of my house and the winter turned wet, I would be very uncomfortable. If the sidewalk in front of my house was torn up by the tree and it was leaning over my house and the tree is twelve thousand pounds in weight, I would be concerned. And I'm also concerned for the city in terms of their liability. I understand their position. I feel that there are more important issues in this world other than this tree. And I want to really offend people by saying that Andy Warhol said that everybody has their ten minutes of fame. And it seems to be true when it comes to public comment, but I really agree with the city's position. And thank you.
Thank you.
Rebecca Lee, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you so much, Mayor Peak. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm also here to ask you to rehear the evidence regarding the Elm tree in Jewel Park and reconsider your decision. And I hope that you decide to do that if you haven't already. I was, I'm grateful for your comment earlier, Mayor Peak. I'm just not sure what it meant. So why would I want you to do this? And it's because I believe you were given inaccurate information in your packet last meeting. You were told it was a hybrid tree when it's not. So I just wanted to read you the transcribed transcription of the BNRC meeting. So it was a conversation between Megan McKenna and Al Wifis. And Megan asks, the pruning that's needed to replace the sidewalk now, that's not part of your risk calculation, correct? And the city arborist says, no, it is. And Megan says, oh, it is? And then she follows up with, if there was an alternative that didn't require the root pruning, would the risk still be the same assessment? And Al Wifis says, the risk would be lowered because you're not pruning. So if you don't do anything, if you just walked away and did nothing, you're still going to have a tree with a moderate risk. So I wanted to make sure that that was really clear, that we're not making this up about the moderate risk of the tree. That seemed to be a huge issue. And this risk assessment of moderate has been independently verified by two other arborists. A group of us hired these arborists because we wanted to make sure of the risk factor. We wanted to know that the tree falling is not imminent and that it's not an imminent danger. Another point, all the arborists, including the city arborist, agreed upon and have stated publicly is that the current risk factor of the tree was caused by damage done to it by routine root pruning. They all agree that standard urban forestry practices of root pruning damaged this tree and created the risk factor. So the short of my request tonight is that I'd like you to rehear this case of the Elm tree in Jewel Park. And the long of it is, I'd like you to contemplate the long-term implication of the fact that our routine management is literally killing trees prematurely. It was, the routine practices were designed before drought became a kind of a normal thing. So all cities in our state are grappling with this right now and facing that standard practices are costly and problematic. There's a group of us who are dedicated citizens and who want to preserve the Grove in Pacific Grove. And we recognize that with the climate change drying the earth out in our state, the way we care for trees must change to ensure their survival. And our research shows that mitigation measures to save this tree are ADA compliant.
Ms. Lee, you can see the time is up. Thank you. And I'm very, I'm very glad that you are safe. So we'll now end public comments. And come back to our consent agenda. Do we have anyone from council wishing to pull an item from the consent agenda, Councilmember McAdams?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't want to pull an item. First, thank you, everyone, for their their comments with regards to the Elm tree. I heard those several times about us, you know, thank you to the council for for bringing it back or talking, you know, re-discussing the Elm tree. I'm just, I would like to perhaps, can our city attorney speak to that? Are we talking about that this evening or what is that?
So Member McAdams, the Elm tree's not on the agenda. So I'm sorry, but we're gonna have to defer that discussion.
Mr. Mayor, if I could chime in on this, though, there is a path by which the council could put this on a future agenda. And if you wanted to put this on a future agenda, this would be the time to do that. But I don't want to say anything more at this point unless there's a question that you have.
Okay, Mr. Laredo is not saying this is the time to do that, this minute. But obviously, we take agenda items through the next week for the following council. So this can come back. And that was the point of my comment. I'm not seeing any council member wishing to pull a council consent item. Is there anyone from the public wishing to pull a consent agenda item?
I do see a hand raised, Mr. Mayor. Michael Dickinson, you have the floor. Mr. Dickinson, do you wish to pull an item from the consent agenda? You'll need to unmute yourself.
No, I do not. I had hoped to be in the previous comment section, but I missed that.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Don't move, Your Honor.
May we have a vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor Protem Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember McAdams?
Aye.
Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Councilmembers Emilio?
Aye.
Paletti?
Aye.
Aye.
And Tomlinson?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero to approve the consent agenda.
At brief summaries, council has just approved the September fifteenth city council minutes. We've received minutes on the Monterey Salinas Transit Meeting in July from Councilmember Emilio. Minutes for a recap of the League of California Cities Annual Conference from Councilmember McAdams. Also from Councilmember McAdams, Association of Monterey Bay Area Governments Minutes from August. It's also called Handbag. We've received a report on local emergency actions there from Mr. Harvey. There are none. Now, we have confirmed appointment of Hunter Porter Eldridge to the Architectural Review Board. And we have authorized myself to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Waste Management District to help implement Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three, which is the Organic Waste Emissions Reduction Bill. And we've received minutes from Nicholas Moreland, Secretary from the Economic Development Commission Meeting from August. And that brings us to our regular agenda, public hearings, item eleven A, our amended current fiscal year operating and capital improvement budget. Ms. Pope, welcome.
Thank you. Give me one second while I pull up my presentation. Hey, good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, staff, and members of the public. Tonight, for your consideration, is an ordinance to amend the fiscal year twenty-one twenty-two operating and capital improvement budget. Three years ago, the city implemented encumbrance accounting, which places a hold on funds for city contracts by issuing purchase orders. Some contracts that were budgeted in fiscal year twenty-twenty-one were not complete, and the funds need to be carried forward to the current fiscal year. Along with contracts, there are also capital improvement projects and one capital outlay purchase that were also in progress at year-end and need to be carried forward to twenty-one twenty-two. The combined carryforward total for purchase orders, projects, and outlay expenses is approximately three million dollars, and the revenues are approximately five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Two additional amendments that are being proposed include a donation from Sustainable Pacific Grove to fund three new drinking water fountains and expenses and revenues affiliated with the Public Works fire cleanup and rebuild. And that concludes my presentation. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
I see no hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
All right, going back to council, council discussion. Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Pope, for this agenda report. I am in support of staff's recommendations. And just a couple of comments. I'd like to thank Sustainable Pacific Grove for their fundraising and generous support for the water refill stations. I know that's been in the works for a long time, so I'm really excited to see these available in our city. And also, thank you to Public Works for being steadfast on the repairs to the office and courtyard. I know that they have been in temporary buildings for a while, and so I just wanted to appreciate staff's flexibility. Thanks.
I have a couple of comments and a recommendation. I thank you very much, Ms. Pope, for that, for the report. It appears to me that we are running a general fund balance about nine and a half million dollars from the start of the budget to the end, end of the budget, which, which is really good news. Should be flashing lights on that, I think. And that puts us at, at the reserve policy of thirty-five percent of the annual expenditures. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe that's correct, but I see Tori jumping on. I'll let her answer. Mayor, we will also have that reviewed at the budget presentation this afternoon. Evening.
Okay, well, I'd love to make that a banner item. Our reserves are on target for this year, which is amazing. And a couple of quick questions, the CARES Act funding that's embedded in this. You don't see it in this agenda report, but it is obviously embedded in your calculations. Is that right, in your revenues?
Mayor Peak, when you're referring to the fiscal year nineteen, I'm sorry, twenty-twenty-one budget, yes, those CARES Act funds are within, partially within the general fund and partially within the CARES Act fund.
Okay, all accounted for, even though it's not explicitly noted in the report, but just to assure everybody, it's taken care of. And I see that some of the, the capital project funds. Are we on track for spending enough money to capture all our Measure X funds? I believe we are. But I just wanted to double check with this budget.
In this fiscal year, just looking at what we prepared for our auditors, it looks like we are on track to make our maintenance of effort, if that's, if that's the request.
Exactly. Thank you. I don't, I don't remember that acronym MO, maintenance of effort, so appreciate that. All right, great. And so, I just have one recommendation. And based on prior knowledge, I believe in this budget, we have a hundred thousand dollars of revenue from the sale of water entitlements going into the general fund. And so, I have, my recommendation is because the local water project has generated these funds and it is currently operating at a loss, I recommend that we put all one hundred percent of water entitlement sales for this fiscal year twenty-one twenty-two into the local water project enterprise fund. Is that possible?
That is an amendment that you can, you can choose, choose to make with this budget or with also presentation at the next ARPA meeting. We can bring that with the ARPA budget coming back at the next meeting. We can also bring that, either way.
All right, well, since you have the ordinance already before us, I'm suggesting to, to my colleagues that we, we do that change now. We took, put all the water entitlement sales this year into the local water project fund and in that way help reduce the operating loss. Councilmember Pedori?
Thank you, Mayor. I believe Councilmember Coletti had his hand raised, so I'll let him go first and then I'll come back.
No, well.
Okay, that's fine then. Either way, so my question was, the fire damage, it looks like we have a ten thousand dollar deductible. So, and then there's a quote here saying that there's a cost of three hundred thousand for repairs. How does that work? The three hundred thousand is actually borne by the insurance or does it, do we have to foot the bill first and then they reimburse us? How does that work?
Yeah. Yes, it's reimbursable by our insurance.
So, we have to bear the costs first and then make receipts, et cetera?
Yes, that is correct. We send a report and then they reimburse us.
Okay, very good. And then to Mayor Peak's question, any particular reason why the local water project, what kind of revenue is not actually part of the local water project fund? Why, why are we, why is that out of place to begin with? So, Mayor Peak is suggesting that the proceeds be allocated to the fund. It seems like the proceeds are not allocated to the fund. They're going back to the general fund right now. Is, is so, why is it going back to the general fund? Why is it not going to the local water fund to begin with? Is there a story there or is it just how we operate?
I would, I would also look for affirmation from the city attorney. When the, the city received these water entitlements, the water entitlements were, were, were a city asset. They weren't necessarily part of the local water project per se. It is considered more of an intangible asset that was not necessarily generated from the local water project. And I see our city attorneys on the line, so I'll defer to him.
Yeah, I, I agree with the path you're going down. Yes, the, the city council just cannot at its own discretion, sequester funds into a reserve account. The general funds and monies that are earned on general fund assets are general funds. Once they are general funds, then the council can decide how to expend them. But you cannot just at your will, put them into an, a, a untouchable reserve. You could put them into a designated reserve, but it's not really an untouchable reserve.
And just to expand upon that, the city attorney's comment is that if they were given or the rationale to the local water project at one point, then the city would not be able to touch it. The enterprise funds are supposed to be self-sufficient, generating enough funds to cover their expenses.
And so, just to follow up on that note, then, is what the mayor, is what Mayor Peak's suggesting, does that, is the money now coming out of the general fund to, that's where we are, that's what Mayor Peak's? I guess I need some clarification. Is that the proposal that the fund from the money from the general fund is now going to be allocated to local water project fund?
Yes. Mr. Peduri, the mayor, that would be the path that it would take from an accounting standpoint. The asset of the intangible water entitlement rights are held in the general fund. So, when we have a sale of the asset, we would have to reduce that asset and then transfer the money to the, the local water project.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Councilmember Coletti?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think the real thing that you're, you want to do is not transfer it to the local water project, but transfer whatever revenue we generate from a water project back into the sewer enterprise fund, which we borrowed six hundred thousand dollars from to shore up the local water project fund. So, if that was what you're thinking, I completely support that. We are in debt to a Prop two eighteen fund. And there are strict, there are strict guidelines for taking loans out on a Prop two eighteen fund. And the sooner we can pay that off, the better in my mind. So, whatever rent revenue we can eke out from the local water project as far as the sales of the entitlement, then I think we should go and apply that towards the sewer enterprise fund loan. I do have a question for staff. The, the two, and Councilmember Pedori kind of brought it up. The Public Works Building is, did we receive an estimate already for what the, what the replacement cost will be based on the fire damage? And will this, will this basically cover everything that needs to happen to bring that building back in shape?
Councilmember Coletti, through the mayor, this is just a preliminary estimate from our insurance company based on their experience. The Public Works Department, as they go out and get proposals, will be coming back with a more refined number.
Okay, so this, this three hundred or two ninety or whatever it is, this is just the initial claims adjuster who provide value, basically?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. I do have a couple of questions about some of these POs that are less than forty thousand dollars. And I'm assuming these are issued through the city manager's spending authority. Are you expecting any of them to go over the forty thousand dollar threshold that then would require council approval?
Oh, these are, these are purchase orders that were set up in the previous fiscal year and we're only bringing forward that amount that is left on the contract.
Okay, does it take it over the original amount? Or is this, is it going to take it over what was originally authorized? Or is it just strictly carrying forward and that's all?
That's correct. It's just carrying forward what was budgeted for last year.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, I did have some questions, but pardon? I did have some questions about the local water project, but I think we've covered that at the next item on the budget. Thank you very much.
Mayor Protempory Smith?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, you know, I, I've listened to the comments tonight and the suggestion by the mayor. I, I actually think tonight we should go forward with the recommendation. And if there are additional things, perhaps staff can bring it back with our October twentieth meeting discussion of ARPA funds or somehow link it in or maybe perhaps bring another item. But tonight, I think we should go with just the budget amendment as prepared by staff. And so, for that reason, I will make a motion to approve the recommendation.
And I'll second that motion also.
All right, discussion on the motion. Well, I've, I've got a question. So, in regards to Mayor Protempory Smith's recommendation to defer discussion of the local water project entitlement funds, revenue, how does, where, either Ms. Pope or Ms. Hannah, where do you think would be the best place or time to have this discussion?
Mayor Peak, it could be better at the next council meeting. There will be some discussions on potential uses of ARPA funds. And in advance, we can prepare like a, a certain discussion on allocation of water entitlements to incorporate into that item. It is going to contain a budget amendment for a few other items as well.
Okay, all right, well, that sounds good. The, I didn't realize that the water entitlement revenue had to go to the, by law, had to go to the general fund and then transferred over to the local water project or, or in this case, maybe to go to the sewer enterprise fund to pay off the loan. It sounds like a bit of, no offense intended, a accounting shell game on it, but it sounds, sounds good to me and I'm in support of the motion on, on the floor. Any other questions, discussion? If not, may we have a vote, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protempory Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Emilio?
Aye.
Councilmembers Coletti?
Aye.
McAdams?
Aye.
Peduri?
Aye.
Tomlinson?
Aye.
Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to item twelve A, City Council Salary and Health Benefits. Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor, and I do have a presentation. If Ms. Kendall can put that up on the screen. And the next slide. So, the city council benefits are in our council policy, also municipal code. The mayor and city council, we are classified as full-time employees. The city's salary practice is to provide employees with ninety-five percent of the total median compensation package. Council salaries have not been increased in twenty-two years. And as council members, we may decline all or part of our compensation. Next slide. So, Government Code Section three six five one six actually speaks to council members' salaries. They are set by and determined by the city's population. The state code allows for a five percent salary increase from the date of the last increase. And it does not classify health benefits as salary as long as the benefits that are provided are equitable to all city employees. And the next slide. So, we did have, our human resources did do a salary survey that was included in the agenda packet. And this is similar to typical salary surveys that the city has done where we go and compare with other cities in the area. And the next slide. So, this is just sort of a quick visual of what cities that were included in the, in the Bryce Consulting Survey, which ones provide health benefits. All of the cities provide a salary. And then some of the cities provide additional benefits. And so, that would be the city of Monterey. They receive a membership to the sports center. Santa Cruz and Salinas receive a car stipend allowance. A lot of the cities receive cellphone allowance, life insurance, and there's other miscellaneous benefits that they put in the other benefits category. But, but just about half are provided with health benefits. And the same, you know, about another half are provided with other benefits. The next slide, please. So, as far as the financial impact, because the salary has not been increased in over twenty years, So as far as the financial impact, because the salary has not been increased in over 20 years. We are, we could increase it by 100%, up to 100%. So really anywhere between 1 to 100% is what is allowed. And once the salary is increased, that clock starts over again. So currently we are, we can increase 100%. Because the 5% over that maxes out, obviously at the 20 years is 100%. So the annual impact of a 100% salary increase per council member would be $5,040. And then the annual impact of the 100% salary increase for the mayor. If we do 100% would be $8,400. And then there's the annual health benefit city contribution per each participating employee. And as well as there are some contribution towards the CalPERS. And I'll go ahead and let Letitia speak to that. There was a addition that she provided in a RADA sheet, so. And the next slide. So the next step, just like with all employee salary increases. Would be a draft ordinance and resolution would return to council. And we would also have to amend our city council policy 000-11. And that is called city council benefit. So that speaks to what council members receive. Or of course, we could provide other direction to staff. And the next slide. So that's it. Again, I just would like to reiterate that we are at liberty to increase the salary up to 100%. And so that could be from 1% to 100%. And then, once the, the salary is increased, that clock is reset. So then it would start accumulating back at 5%. And, you know, we did receive a lot of emails. Thank you for that. And, you know, of course, I understand people who serve on council. We're not intended to support our households with the provided salary. You know, but I, I don't think it's unreasonable to have a salary that will cover caregiving costs. Also council members, you know, I, I really hope that, you know, we're spending a lot of time. And have the expertise that is needed. And really, you know, to offer equitable access to health benefits. Like all employees of the city, I think is fair. And as we see in the survey, a, a lot of cities have gone that way. Ultimately, you know, for me, the way that the salary is currently arranged. It really is a barrier for anyone who is not of means to, to run for office in Pacific Grove. You know, and if you are not of means and you're working, you know, you need to have a flexible schedule and paid time off. God forbid, if you're paying, you know, 20 to $25 an hour for caregiving cost. You know, so, so I, I would like for us to be thinking about. You know, who we want to run for office, how, how much access, you know. Can we provide to encourage people to run for local government? So, thank you very much.
Now go up, I'll comment.
Thank you, Mayor. I do not see any hands. Sorry, I apologize. Andrew Kay?
Welcome.
Seem to have lost him. Anthony Chiani, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. So I have a couple of questions. I think it's important that everybody get paid a fair. Amount of money for the work that they provide. And so what I would like to know is, are you all keeping time cards and records? Of the work you do and what the, that work is? So we can, we, the public, the citizens who would be basically paying for this. And are paying for it, can look at it and see if we're getting the bang for our buck. I know it's a lot of work. I've watched you over the years, all of you contribute your energy. And I heard Jenny McAdams say, Councilmember McAdams say, your expertise. Well, I'm not really sure what all of your expertise is, meaning collectively or individually. It would be nice to know what that is. I ran a business for about 40 years. The last person to get a raise was me every time. The first person was everybody else that worked for me and all my consultants. So I'm a little concerned about how this is going to play out. So please give it a lot of consideration. Please provide us with some access to your time cards. So we can understand how you're spending your time and, and also what your expertise is at what you're doing. So we can contribute to whether or not this is a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Stewart, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Yeah, hi, Mayor Peak and council members. I just wanted to reiterate what I said earlier this evening. I'm just concerned about the council looking at, at potentially giving themselves a 100% salary increase. To me, that is just astronomical under the circumstances that we're living in today. Councilmember McAdams mentioned that the guidelines call for a 5% maximum increase per year. And my thinking is that for the last 20 plus years, other council members and mayors of our city. Have been trying to preserve capital to make improvements to our community. With such things as improvements to our infrastructure, our parks, our, all the other things that make a city run. And it's, I am very familiar with childcare costs. I'm also very familiar with working full-time and having children who need care while I work full-time. But that, I think, is not necessarily the issue here. I think what we're really looking at is making a reasonable. Consideration around salaries based on performance. And also based on the monies available to our community. And I know back when we were debating short-term rentals, one of the big concerns was that we weren't going to have enough money to. Run the city. Should we no longer have short-term rentals? And apparently we seem to be doing okay so far. But I think bumping up salaries, that amount is just preposterous, in my opinion, in one lump sum. So thank you for your listening to me and for your attention.
Thank you.
Colleen, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. About two years ago, I spoke against an increase in salary and health benefits for our city council members. I hope that when this discussion about compensation was going to be brought up again. That I would feel positive about any policy amendment, but I do not. All of the non-funded capital improvement projects that, that Pacific Grove should be addressing remain unfunded. Our city sidewalks are crumbling or missing. Our historical treasures like Chautauqua Hall continues to deteriorate with the leaking roof and repairs undone. Our Jewel Park gazebo can't even be painted due to a lack of money. Our streets are crumbling and when I want to take my grandchildren to a park. I generally go to a really beautiful park in Monterey. Where are the projects for the residents and kids? Like a skate park, a dog park, or picnic tables that are intact? I think you know the answer. The city doesn't have the revenues in the budget. Some of our city council members do so much for the city. They volunteer, they respond to residents and they proactively advocate for the betterment of PG. And I thank you for that. A few others show up for the city council meetings, period. One cannot be bothered to attend their commission meetings except for a photo opportunity once a year. And I'm sorry to be harsh, but those are the facts. I know Ms. McAdams has a worthy goal to increase participation in city politics by single dads, single moms. Minorities and the financially insecure. I think that's a really worthy goal. And I support networking and training sessions to encourage broad participation. But for the city council to vote themselves a very expensive compensation package. It's going to serve to disenfranchise the many, many volunteers in this city who already serve on commissions. Who weed, pick up litter and assist at city events. They don't receive a stipend and they don't ask for one. I encourage you to vote against this misguided approach to increasing compensation at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Inga Lawrence and Doimer, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. Well, elections are the performance review for council members. Whereas we citizens can't hire and fire city staff, no matter how they perform. We sure can with our supposed representatives. And that is the only way your city stipends should be raised, the ballot box. It is really a public servant position. You get a stipend to cover, as in the charter, expenses. It's way out of alignment with actual services rendered. The survey presented is highly flawed with no actual, no actual comparables for our small city. We've got, she's comparing with much larger cities. That have fewer council members and pretty much the same stipend. It's not that different. This is definitely a ballot box issue. That's our only way to let you know. You can't just vote yourselves a ridiculous pay raise. This is unconscionable. Take it to the ballot. If you trusted it all, take it to the ballot because we citizens certainly will. And we certainly put in probably as much time, those of us who participate. Put in as much time as you do on researching and forming opinions. You're supposed to do that and then give it to city council. I'm not even sure where you came up with some of your figures because. 88,000? I mean, that's. Is that the mean income for all of Pacific Grove residents? Because it certainly isn't anything in line with a city council member's stipend. Take it to the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Dickinson, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. Couple ways of looking at this. I wonder. If you can figure out how much you'd be getting paid per hour. If you looked at how long you worked and what you were actually earning, what your hourly wage would be. I worked at a company for 20 years and the only pay increases I ever got were CPI. And if you looked at the 20 years, 22 years since you've gotten an increase in wage. And you looked at it just from the CPI index. What would the raise be? What percentage of raise would you be getting? I'm thinking that, you know, we still don't have our libraries open full. Time because, partly because we're still training new staff. But I wonder how much of that is also because of lack of funds to pay new staff. The health benefits, do they continue after you leave office? Or are they only valid for when you are in office? So those are just questions that I would ask to get some information on, just to. Versus just coming up with 22 years and 100%. You know, what, what do you get per hour? What would the CPI equivalent have been over that period of time? And, yeah, that's what I would have to say.
Thank you.
Lisa Chiani, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. Well, I, I agree that the goal is a very good one of, of greater participation in government. By people of, of all income levels. But it's, it's a, it's a funny situation because you have two-year terms. And, and it, and your term depends on whether you get voted in or out. So it, it just doesn't lend itself to, to a, it, a simple plan. And I think this needs a lot more study. And I'm also concerned because the city staff made a lot of sacrifices last year to keep their jobs. They took, they took a cut in pay and hours, of course. I don't know how many of those still are impacted by that. Or, or had to just move on, lost their jobs. I don't know. But it, it just doesn't feel right to me that the city manager got a raise. And now council wants a raise, if you even all do, I don't know. So, so I just think it needs a lot more thought and, and better timing. Needs to wait until things are on an even keel again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew Kay, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mayor, City Council, good evening and thank you for the opportunity to comment on this item. I have written to each of you and received responses from just four of you on the subject. Your charts compares PG with a population of 15,000. To Salinas with a population of 155,000. You have Santa comparison to Santa Cruz with a population of 273,000. These are the cities that have health benefits. In addition, what is not shown are the city budgets. Where PG's budget is $39 million. Watson Field's budget is $157 million. Salinas's budget is $230 million. Monterey's budget is $165 million and Santa Cruz is $285 million. These cities can afford to give extra benefits. These cities also have industry, they have retail, they have Costco, they have Macy's. They have Target and many, many more small businesses. While PG depends primarily on property tax and tourism. PG is the last hometown, a bedroom community of residences. The largest employer in PG is the school system with 329 employees. The top 10 employers in Pacific Grove are the school system and it's rent the last one. The 10th employee is Rite Aid with 18 employees. In Capitola, which has 10,000 people, which is close to Pacific Grove. Their top employee is Toyota Subaru with 200 employees. And their 10th employer is Gail's Bakery at 88 versus our Rite Aid at 18. PG has six council persons. Only Salinas, Watsonville, and Santa Cruz, which have much larger budgets as I've enumerated, have six council people. PG has three point five million dollar in underfunding encounters with the latest increase this year of four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. The pavement management plan of two thousand, twenty nineteen said PG had the worst roads in the county at a pavement index of fifty-five. The recommendation was to spend from the consultant was to spend two point six million dollars a year. We barely spend the eight, one point eight four million dollars to maintain our P, low PCI. We spent one point four two million dollars last year. Tactua Hall is this historic building which has deteriorated, needs to be painted and needs refurbishment. The downtown sidewalks need to be repaired or replaced. Safe sidewalks for children to walk to school need to be paved and maintained. Bike lanes need to be painted with appropriate signage. Our parks require upgrades and maintenance. PG has no money for weed maintenance, so volunteers are performing works that other cities generally perform.
Thank you, Mr. Kubica.
Thank you.
All right, we'll close public comment and bring back to council for discussion. Councilmember Coletti.
Thank you, your honor. Well, I think it's pretty overwhelming based on the responses we got tonight. And also a survey that was done on Nextdoor. Couple hundred people participated in that. It was overwhelming that for all the reasons stated during public comment today, that this is just not a good idea. And state law may allow it, but just because state law allows it, doesn't mean it's a good idea or that we should do it. In fact, I'm thoroughly convinced that we should not do this. And first and foremost, we are not full-time employees. We are public servants. We're volunteers and so are members of the planning commission. The architectural review board, historic resources, EDC, name them all. The only thing that separates us from them is that we can gift ourselves through vote a raise. And I think it's an abuse of power and discretion to, to do that. Especially since there are so many outs, I mean, Mr. Kubica spoke very eloquently. Enlisted all the outstanding capital improvement projects we have. Maintenance of our parks, our sidewalks, our roads. A new fire truck. I mean, all of these things that we wring our hands over, do we have the money for? And then here we are contemplating gifting ourselves a hundred percent increase in salary. And I don't consider the salary, by the way. It's a stipend. The charter does not contemplate benefits either. The charter simply authorizes us to make a small, small compensation for reimbursement purposes. We shouldn't be comparing what we receive on council with the median household income of, of the entire city. I mean, I, I saw that comparison, Nate, and I just couldn't, I couldn't fathom it. The other thing that's kind of left out in all of these surveys is that council members receive other income by sitting on other boards and other local jurisdictions, other agencies. You know, you can get up to fifty to a hundred and fifty dollars a meeting. So it's not just what we receive here. We're also receiving incomes for participating in local agencies. So that was never factored into this survey. And I don't like surveys like this, by the way. I think all they do is it's a self-fulfilling cycle. Oh, hey, they're doing it, so we've got to do it. And then the next one says, oh, they did it because they did it, so lets us do it. And all the time, the residents are out of the loop. So if you look at the city's org chart, that's what I always do. I find that very grounding. At the top of the organizational chart is the residents of Pacific Grove. And if this is such a great idea, you know, if there's such a burning desire to increase salary and benefits for council, why we have all these outstanding projects. Then send it out to a vote and campaign for it. And that's the way you get, that's the way you get buy-in on this. This is going to be such a divisive issue. I mean, I don't even, you know, the only way you could possibly get any kind of reconciliation on it is to send it out for a vote. I, I could never support this. I, I knew full well what I was getting involved in when I ran for office. And quite frankly, I'm here to say thank you for even giving me the four hundred and twenty dollars a month. And by the way, it was mentioned that you can take all or some of it. That's actually not true. There's ordinance currently in place. I just learned this by studying this issue. There's ordinance in place that says you either take it all or you don't take any at all. Now, that was temporarily, that was temporarily set aside for COVID. Allowing council to kind of share the pain. The ten percent reduction, for instance, that staff took. Council didn't do that. We didn't, we didn't, we didn't decrease our salary like, like staff had done. Even though that suspension of our ordinance, which only allows you to take all your salary or none of it, was suspended. So I think there's a lot of reasons to run for council. I like being on council. I have a good time. I like working with people. I like working for my residents. But it's not about money. It's never has been. And I just get to the point where, you know, a hundred percent increase, not to mention the benefits. You know, the, the benefits are just, we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars here. So I could never support that. The charter never contemplated offering benefits. It was only meant to be a stipend to reimburse out-of-pocket expenses. And, but again, if there's a real burning desire. Let's send it out to the voters and put it on the ballot. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tempore Smith.
Thank you, your honor. Yeah, so, you know, we received a lot of comment on this. And I've been on the council for five years almost now, so I'm proud of that. We have, in that time, we, I think it came up one time to increase our compensation and we decided against it for whatever reason. So I just have a few comments. I, I'll try to make it brief, but I do have a lot to say about this. So we are elected to make the decisions and not all decisions need to be made by a vote of the people. And this is a prime example. The, all governing bodies across our great country make these decisions about their compensation. So I think the notion of a vote, which we've seen not only from councilmember Coletti, but also from other public comment, is misplaced. So I think that we, as the leaders of the community, as elected representatives of the city, we need to make this decision. The next thing I think about is that we do need to enhance incentives for folks with maybe less means, maybe more costs, maybe more reasons not to run, to actually run for council. I think that's very important. I know that during COVID, I was, had a caregiver here that I was paying while I was serving on the council. And we all know how difficult last year was. It was no different for me as an individual. And so I do think it's important that we, we remove barriers. And I do think that this could do that. And so that's, that's the first reason. The second reason that I support this, this recommendation, I think there's no, the recommendation to discuss it. So let me just state first, first out that I think we should increase the salary as high as we can because we haven't done so for twenty-two years. And I think that was my second reason, which is we, we haven't, this hasn't been done in twenty-two years. And I don't think it was because people were thinking, oh, we're going to spend money here or there. It's not the kind of volume of, of funds to support a two million dollar CIP project. And I would even say that this will not at all imperil our ability to complete our projects. The only thing imperiling our ability to complete our projects is our lack of staff because of just we're doing the best we can. We got as many folks as we can on the ground, but we can't do everything we want to do and we try our best. And I think honestly, we're quite effective at it. But I think what this is about is about our human resources and our council members are human resources. We need to support our human resources as much as we support our infrastructure and our other expenditures. I, I've been a champion of infrastructure. In fact, I think my first campaign, I ran on, you know, mostly on infrastructure and economic stability and things of that nature. So it's not as if I believe that that's not important. It's just that I also think human resources are important. And I think the future of the council, because I'll only be on for three more years, but the future of the council is important and that we get the right people, we get people that want to do it. And I think this can be an incentive. And I also think, finally, my last point, and I'll be quiet, is that, you know, other cities have health benefits. And I don't think you can go off just straight population. I think that it's important that we're a leader. At Pacific Grove, we're a leader. We're a leader in many areas. We need to be a leader also in providing our employees health benefits. I know personally that I, I have health benefits through my work and I probably won't. I don't know. I probably wouldn't do it if it were to come to pass in a future meeting. We actually voted on this. But if somebody needed health benefits, I'd be supportive of that. So that's in closing, that's, those are the reasons why I think this is a good idea and I support. And thank you, councilmember McAdams, for bringing it forward and I appreciate it.
Councilmember Emilio.
Thank you, mayor. I have to do a little reflection here. And I understand what councilmember McAdams put forward here. However, I kind of reflect on what our Pacific Grove employees did in the past COVID year. And we're looking at that. But I also have to step back in twenty eighteen when I ran for council. Prior to running, I was involved with, in, in another city. I was a president of a, of an organization that had twenty-five members and we did it on our own. But when I ran in twenty eighteen. I ran because of, I was proud of the city. I was proud of Pacific Grove and I wanted to serve Pacific Grove residents. That was my point. I wanted to serve. So fortunately, in twenty eighteen, I was elected and I was very proud of that. And, and then I happened to drop by city hall and they said I had to fill out a W-two form. And I said, a W-two form? One of my ser, why do I have to fill out a W-two form? And they said, well, you get paid for this. I said, you get paid for this? I never expected this, to get paid for this. And I did it out of the goodness of my heart. And I did it for the, the pride of being a, representing the citizens of Pacific Grove. And I could continue on, but I am against this proposal.
Councilmember Tomlinson.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, everybody. I, I definitely, this is an interesting subject. I do remember when it came up a couple of years ago and it was not super popular. And I'll say a few things. I also didn't know it was a paid position. And when, when I ran and, and got elected, so it was a surprise to me. I certainly can say that, you know, my time has about a year left. And whether or not I run again has nothing to do with the pay or the benefits. Me personally, but this isn't about me personally and my healthcare or my pay or, or me. It really is not. I'm a steward of this position and I will come and go and other people will serve in this capacity in the future. And I thank them before they even get signed up because it's a challenging job. But a rewarding one too. And I'm also very honored to be doing it. So what I would like to create is the ability for maximum participation and maximum talent, you know, to come. You always want to have the biggest talent pool to be able to pick from when you're voting. And I'd like the voters to have fantastic slate of people to, to pick from. So if, if messing with the compensation will get some more talent out, it kind of remains to be seen. I, I would support that. But I have done a little bit of some math. I would like to share my screen quickly. Can I share my screen, Sandra? Do you guys see this? Hello? Does anyone see this?
It's a blank.
It's blank. Strange. Okay. Well, I will just talk to you about numbers. So I did some research. The city of Goleta, which is a coastal town similar to ours. We're fifteen thousand people, about a forty thousand million or forty million dollar budget. Goleta's thirty thousand people, about a fifty million dollar budget. So they're slightly bigger and slightly more money. In two thousand and eighteen, they decided to, they wanted to give themselves a raise as well. And they put it to the vote of the people, which I, I very much support and think is a good idea. And they did so with a ballot measure called W-two, two zero one eight. And they tied the council's income or stipend, if you will, to the to the non-family median household income. Which for Goleta was fifty-six thousand. For Pacific Grove, it's about fifty-seven thousand. So also very similar. And they tied it to that. And forever going forward, their stipend is a percentage of the median income. And median income will slowly increase over years. On average, it goes up about one and a half to two percent. And I would really like our city, so we can preserve for the future, to do something like that. And this is just a discussion item. So I'm, you know, I'm not hard over on anything. But I think it's a really good idea to put it on the ballot that we ask the citizens to go ahead and tie our stipend to something. So that there is an automatic escalation, small escalation going forward for the cost of living and as childcare goes up, as these types of things go up. Now, what Goleta did is a bit shocking. They did seventy-five percent for their council members and ninety percent for their mayor and they are a council, the city manager from a government. So they're, they're making quite a bit of money down there, but I, I don't propose that. If you do the math on what we currently make, we make nine percent and fifteen percent. And I think those are perfectly fine numbers. I'm not proposing that we change them. But I do think that tying them to the median household income on, and it would need to be on the ballot. We can't do this by a vote. Is, is a good idea. Just to give you reference, if, if you could see my screen. Ms. Ms. McAdams is proposing that one hundred percent increase. That would be about a seventeen percent or twenty-nine percent of the median income for council and mayor. I also did some math on, I wish you could see my screen, on the hourly, what does that equal hourly? If we went to what councilmember McAdams is proposing, increasing where we're at now by a hundred percent. That would assume council members work seven hours a week. And the mayor works eleven and a half hours a week and we make thirty dollars an hour. If you, I, I saw on Nextdoor, a lot of people made the assumption, even former councilmembers said, you know, councilmembers make, actually work about five hours a week. And maybe the mayor slightly more, seven and a half hours, also at the thirty-dollar hour rate. That would also equal about a thirty-dollar an hour rate. Yeah, that would also equal about a thirty dollar an hour rate. So currently, what, what we're getting paid is assuming we make, we work three and a half hours a week and six hours a week. I can, I can attest that I don't have a time sheet, but I know that I work more than three and a half hours a week. I'm sitting here with you guys for six hours tonight. So um, and, and, and it takes many hours to prepare for the meetings. So. Sorry, it was long. To sum it all up, I really think we should go to a vote of the people and figure out how that, how the mechanics of that will work. To tie it to the median income. And if the numbers are exactly the same as where we're at now, I would be fine with that because I think it's baby steps and. Um, it would be a good move for the, for the future. I also would be okay with a slight increase, a couple of percentage increase. In the, the base pay. So, thanks.
Councilmember Pedori.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, and thank you, Ms. McAdams for bringing this up. I, I. I mean, like, like others, uh, others were surprised that they were getting a salary. I was actually, I, I knew what the salary was when I got in. Uh, but uh. The primary intent for me running was really for public service, not for the salary aspect. What was surprising to me was really when this agenda item came up that I could actually dictate my own salary. That to me was uh, really great news, but, but really the, the. Uh, what, what I, what I'm hearing and what I'm seeing is that this item was brought up two years ago. Uh, this item is again coming in. Uh, there is a, there's a lot of actually, plenty of information that has been shared by the public. By the council members, et cetera. In order for us to put this item to rest and not like have it come again. Uh, I would actually support this going to vote so that we are, we're done with this topic to begin with. Uh, and then secondly, I'm, I'm also supportive of tying it to an index so that uh, in the future. If this were to pass by public vote, uh, then, then we don't have to again spend time on this to. Uh, understand how much the increase needs to be and so on and so forth. Uh, and, and I would like to comment that the um. Similar to what Councilmember Thomas and pointed out. Uh, while it appears that uh, we were spending like five hours every two weeks uh, in front of an audience to. Uh, gather information and provide comments, et cetera. Really, i- it is more than the ten odd hours in a, in a given month. I, I, I know for a fact that I pretty much lo- look at. Uh, city council items on a daily basis. So, so it's, it's, it's certainly more than ten hours. So I do think that uh. If we're tying it to an hourly kind of uh, item, then we need to look at it at a different angle altogether. And I would also add that uh, health benefits are not uh. Health benefits is really the biggest challenge. I would say from, coming in from uh. I know for myself and for my family, for instance, we pay into health benefits. It's not like a given. Uh, certain, uh, certain population could potentially get free medical benefits, but it's not, not so the case for everybody. Uh, we, we have to pay an X amount of dollars every, every month into a health benefit fund. So any health benefits that comes out of this position, I, I would say would uh, unlike salary. Potentially this health benefits of the side of the equation would possibly benefit like competition. Because most of the time what we see uh, from an economic standpoint is like there are two breadwinners in a given family. And so if you have one, one person in the family really accounting for the health benefits aspect. Potentially that will incentivize them to, to run. So a lot of things in here, but I'm supportive of this in general for going to vote so we can kind of put this item to rest. Thank you.
Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you. And, and thank you, everyone, you know, for this dialogue. This is just having a conceptual discussion and. You know, I think part of the reason why it hasn't been increased in twenty-two years is because, you know, when we talk about it, it's like, oh my gosh. You know, it's, it's the end of the world or, or we're greedy or wanting to give ourselves a raise or whatever. But really, I mean. This is a normal discussion. It's normal for, for employees to get increases. Especially when one hasn't been taken in over two decades, you know, and so. Um, are we public servants? Absolutely. You know, um, I am so grateful to serve on the city council. You know, but similar to what Councilmember Tomlinson is saying, you know, this really. Is, is like a legacy thing, like let's set up people. So they don't have to get beat up if they want to talk about getting a small increase, you know, I mean. We can get a hundred percent, yes. Um, but we don't have to. We can take ten percent. And, and get it set up in a way so future councils don't have to, you know, be intimidated to talk about this. Um, you know, before council members would get life. Time, I think, you know, and, and but at one point. Um, that was okay for our residents and that was something that you receive. When you do that anymore. Um, that is not the community that we are. So I really like tying it to something. So there doesn't have to be this taboo discussion every couple of years. Um, and absolutely, you know, if, if, if this wants to be um, a vote of the people, that's. Great, you know, or, or do we, you know, show that leadership and just say, okay, well. Take a twenty percent increase and every two years, it, you know, this will automatically come back to council. To talk about, do we want to take the five percent increase? That, you know, we're allotted. So um, I really appreciate this discussion and um. And I, and I do think it's important to talk about and I thi- I do think that. This needs to be not such a hands-off conversation. So, thank you.
Councilmember Claddy.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, well, I've got some, I've got some additional thoughts based on the discussion. You know, what hasn't been mentioned is. How about if we take less? How about if we take none? There are cities that offer no compensation. You know, this, the, the LA Times compiled this big list back when the whole thing down in the city of Bell was blowing up. When they were just, they were just robbing uh, the people for, uh, to get their salary increases, et cetera. But there are cities that do not give compensation. There are cities that contemplate giving less compensation. I'd like to see that as our leadership. I don't think it's leadership to give yourself a raise, by the way. Especially when you work for the people. That's what, who we work for. We're volunteers. And I, I understand councilman, and I appreciate the research that uh, Councilmember Thompson. Has done and I'm going to look at it thoroughly. But it kind of. At least my initial assessment, okay, subject to change, subject to revision. My initial assessment is it's still kind of casting this as a salary. We're going to tie this. To a medium salary or whatever median it is that you are going to be doing it to. It's looking at income for a full-time employee. For the, that's their career, that's their job. This is volunteerism. We're volunteers and this, this is not even, it's, it's, it's wrong to say we're employees. We're not full-time employees. We're volunteers. We're officers of the city, serving the role as city council members and a mayor. That's what we need to think about. Now, we can ask the public and I'm all for it. Ask the public, okay, do you think it's reasonable? Uh, that we make a little additional. Uh, we need a little additional compensation to reimburse our out-of-pocket expenses because that's what it's for. It's not meant as a living wage in any, any shape, way or form. In fact, just the charter originally did not allow any compensation for council members. It was only the nineteen sixty-nine charter that then, we've had four charters and it was the nineteen sixty-nine charter that then allows. Uh, compensation to council members. So. I, I want, if we do send it up, and I know this is just an initial discussion, but if we did send it out to the people, I would say. Okay, we are making four hundred and twenty dollars uh, as an advisory vote. Should that go up, stay the same or go down? And uh, and then let the people decide that. I just uh. I just. I just don't want us to think this is like a salary that we're entitled to. We're volunteers. It, we're not entitled to anything except trying to do our best to serve our residents. And um. And I'll tell you, uh, just as a practical point, let's just put it on the table because it's, it's, you know, it's worth, we need to all hear it. This is political suicide. You know, I, I just don't, I mean, really for, you know. Well, I'll just leave it at that. Thank you. I think you all know what I mean. Thanks.
Councilmember Emilio.
Thank you, Mayor. One other thing I wanted to mention in a lot of the points uh, Councilmember Coletti brought up was uh. Excellent, in my opinion, it was excellent. Um, but I do want to mention that. You know, uh, we've all, we're all liaisons to different committees and um. And I, and I'm just going to mention one particular uh, committee I'm, one of the liaisons on is uh. The Traffic Commission. And. Uh, Mr. Kubaga is the chairperson and I know he puts in a ton of time along with other commissioners. When I used to be on Recreation Commission, they put in a lot of time and um. In all the commissions, uh, those volunteers put in a ton of time. Uh, sometimes they're, they're three, four, five hours a night, but they re- in, in, in also. I wanted, I mentioned a couple of council, maybe three council meetings before when I was on Lighthouse Avenue. Uh, walking and there was a, there was, I believe, eight volunteers weeding. And they received nothing. You think about Perkins Park, all the volunteers that are out there, they receive nothing. Or they do it out of what I mentioned before, civic pride. And uh, it's for Pacific Grove. It's for the Pacific Grove residents. That's what we're here to serve. And I just wanted to point that out. Thank you, Mayor.
I want to thank Councilmember McAdams for uh, bringing this topic uh, forward. Um, this is uh. It's a very interesting, has many facets. And obviously, council is uh, pretty much all over the map on where to go from here. And so I'm looking at the recommendation, which is to provide our city manager uh, direction. And his head is probably spinning like mine. So I'm, I'm going to recommend. That we form a subcommittee. One, two or three council members to bring, bring back a um, a recommendation. And something that's, that's more, that's fleshed out so we can be more specific. And of course, we've got this, got uh, council feedback. Um, that you've, we've all just heard. So uh, that would be my motion uh, to, to uh, well, it's my suggestion to form a subcommittee. It would require us to assign people, we'd have to have volunteers and a time limit. And um. And I, uh, in full disclosure, I, I have to tell you that I am generally. I'm not supportive of a raise in compensation for a council or mayor. Councilmember Tomlinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I, I was going to ask you your opinion so I could know uh, before volunteering to be on any kind of subcommittee. Um, because I think uh, a subcommittee is a good idea if there. It, you know, if we can come up with something that is uh, possible for us to agree upon. Um, and it was, you know, this discussion didn't really leave me with. Okay, everybody would like this or maybe, you know, even come contemplate this or that. It was, it's sort of polar. Um, and so I, I don't know how to ask this, but I am curious if, if we have. A little bit of a consensus on voter, going to do the vote. Like going to a vote of the people or if there are some people who are like, no matter what it says, I don't even want to touch this and not, not go to a vote. Because subcommittees take a lot of work uh, to, to, to come up with, with a plan and it doesn't sound. I, I will not sure where everybody stands on if a vote of the people is uh, something that we want to pursue. It also costs money.
Councilmember McAdams.
Mayor, I would be happy to serve on um, on a subcommittee because I think that, you know. Yes, we hear about going to a vote of the people, you know, but, but there are expenses. Wrapped into that. So um, I would be happy to serve if someone else wants to serve, but I would want the subcommittee to be. Sort, sort of have a short and sweet lifespan.
But do we have any volunteers, other volunteers for subcommittee? We could have a subcommittee of one. That is possible. Councilmember Tomlinson.
I'm happy to, to help with a subcommittee, Mayor. Uh, does the city manager have a suggestion? Not sure. He's muted.
I'm sorry about that. No, um. It needs to be fleshed out. The mayor's correct. I, I don't have really any clear direction on this. Um, I think. I, I think I, I heard two people that sound interested in doing some work, uh, McAdams and Tomlinson on this and I would be happy to work with them. There's, there's plenty of research we can do and things that we can look at and we can bring back a, a number of suggestions. Uh, this is an interesting topic. I don't know if that's what you're looking for, but I would be, I think it's a worthy topic of staff's time working with the subcommittee.
Well, I'll, I'll just jump in. Um, yeah, I agree completely with what the. Our city manager just said, until we got to the point of bring back a number of suggestions. Unless it's, you know, a checklist, here's six suggestions and we're going to do a little straw vote on each one of them. But the whole idea of, to me, is that the, the subcommittee would narrow down. Mr. Harvey.
I, I'd be happy to work with the council members to give it our best recommendation. We come up with a recommendation. I'd be happy to do that. We can do that.
Or, or two or three, but not a, a long laundry list. Because we'll be back to where we are tonight. That's uh, my concern. Okay, if folks are okay with that, I'll need a motion to form a uh, compensation subcommittee. And. A council members Tomlinson and McAdams and a time limit.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to recommend that the mayor serve on the subcommittee.
I'm, thank you for volunteering me now.
Well, you suggested, I, I thought it might be interesting. Okay.
No, anyone would like. Would someone like to make a motion to form this subcommittee?
Can I make the motion if I'm on the.
Councilmember Tomlinson.
Okay, I didn't know if I was allowed to. Um, I move that Councilmember McAdams and myself serve on a. Subcommittee to form a. Another agenda item that will come forward to discuss uh, council salary. That will have a suggestion.
By what?
Oh, um, by. The first meeting in November. Or a meeting in November. Is that too soon? I don't know.
That's way too.
Yeah.
A meeting in December? I don't know.
March first, give, yeah, I'm, I'm, excuse me.
Okay, Councilmember Clay, yeah. May, I'll, may I suggest. January.
Sounds good, January. By January.
So what I heard was to form a subcommittee. To consider council compensation. And bring suggestions to council by January twenty twenty-two.
Yes, sir. Yep.
And the ca- the, and the council members McAdams and Tom. And the, and the council members McAdams and Tomlinson. And our city clerk will probably craft that motion into a little bit finer English. Okay, is everybody? Clear on that? If not, we'll. Okay, second, thank you. Any further discussion, clarification needed? Councilmember Tomlinson.
I'll just make a shameless plug for the public to email us if you have ideas or opinions, please.
All right, may we have a vote, please?
Uh, yes, sir. Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Councilmember McAdams?
Aye.
Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Aye.
Councilmembers Emilio?
Aye.
Coletti?
Aye.
Councilmember Padori?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you very much. Um, I. Move that we take a short recess. Ten minutes. Any objections? Councilmember Padori?
Sorry, I was going to do the thumbs up, but instead I raised my hand.
All right, thumbs up, good. Um, well, we'll be informal on this. We'll take a ten-minute break. We'll return at eight forty-two.
Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
Welcome back. We're now on Agenda Item twelve B, update on short-term rental software. Discussion Director Hunter, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council and members of the public. As requested by the city council, after receiving Councilmember McAdams' presentation on Granicus Post Compliance Software at the council's May nineteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting. Community Development Department staff has conducted interviews with several local jurisdictions and looked into several software offerings that may be of assistance to the city. In its ongoing enforcement of short-term rental or STR violations. The city's code enforcement officer, Andrew Butler, took the lead on preparing the information in the attached summary. The summary breaks down the total, the number of STR complaints received since two thousand nineteen, when Measure M took effect. And the sunset of existing licenses occurred. It makes sense that there were quite a few enforcement cases in two thousand nineteen. Uh, and they have steadily reduced as former STR license holders transition away from renting their homes. The summary compares the cost of staff to address complaints versus the cost of obtaining and administering a new software system for this purpose. As indicated in the summary provided, staff recommends that, given the relatively low number of STR complaints received on an annual basis. We continue to address complaints at the code enforcement level. Uh, or staff level, as we have been. Alternatively, if the council wishes to pursue software, staff recommends that council direct staff to conduct a request for proposals or RFP. To obtain a more thorough assessment of options. And I uh am going to try to share my screen and I can. Uh, walk through the summary that our code enforcement officer, Andrew, prepared. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Great, this is just the summary that was included in the packet, uh, so everybody has it, but just to walk through it quickly. Um. Let me just move this over. So as you can see, uh, Andrew did contact several local jurisdictions, and um, this was. The results of those discussions with staff. At neighboring cities. Um. Andrew and I believe, uh, former housing program manager Terry Schaper, who also helped with this. I believe they both met with um Granicus Post Compliance. And uh, came up with these lists of pros and cons. Um. Further, he did a little analysis of staff time spent, and this kind of breaks down, you know, like I mentioned. In the intro. Um, there were quite a lot of complaints and situations where there were confirmed unlicensed. STRs in two thousand nineteen. Um, after Measure M sunsetted. Um, those have steadily dropped. Um, as of the writing of this report and preparing the summary in twenty twenty-one, there were ten complaints. Uh, and two confirmed unlicensed STRs. So Andrew further broke down the cost roughly. For staff to continue um. Handling complaints as, as we do, just on a sort of time and materials basis versus what it might cost to go out for. Um, to purchase software, and then, of course, once we purchase new software, there's administration, there are ongoing fees. Involved. Um, it, one of the. Issues that arose when Andrew was talking with other cities is. Um. Even if you have this software. There's a lot of. Confirming uh of information that staff still has to do verifying. Information that's provided by the software. Uh, product. So. Uh. Staff recommends that we continue to. Um, conduct our own investigations based on complaints. It's a very um, low number of complaints that we get, and uh code enforcement does not spend an inordinate amount of staff time. Handling these complaints. Um, but. If the council would like to pursue. Um, really getting some concrete samples from other. Um, software providers, we would recommend that we actually. Prepare a request for proposals and, and go out in the standard. Way so that we could get a more robust um. Sampling to provide to the council for additional information. Um, that concludes my staff report. I'm available for questions if anybody has any questions with me.
Do we have any public comment?
Uh, yes, Mayor. Anthony Chiani, you have the floor.
Welcome.
I just want to weigh in and uh thank the staff for doing this report. Looks like a very good report. I think it's really. And very important. To uh enforce. The short-term rental ordinances. Um. And it looks like it's working. So I think leave it up to staff, continue doing what they're doing. I don't think you need any other out, help at this point, from what I'm looking at. And uh, my experience over the years, and I'm talking about many years, enforcement is key. To getting compliance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Inga Lawrence and Duimer, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm going to agree with. Uh, Tony Chiani in the fact of enforcement is key. Because, hey, the public really doesn't have a whole lot of faith in the city's process as far as. Plans and going in. I'm going to tell you that as a member of the public. We need. As members of the public to be. Monitoring it all the time, um, even in real estate ads that will. Say, oh, it's in the coastal zone, so that we're going to tout in our ad that, oh, this could be a wonderful short-term rental. Whereas the zone of exclusion absolutely prohibits that of being too close to another one, but the realtors don't check on that. So it's members of the public when one all pops up and you look at their, and it says, oh, my goodness. And it's members of the public that will turn. Or suggest that there is one that is encroaching on a zone of exclusion and the city. I know one where it didn't comply and it, the short-term rental license issue, it shouldn't be. So I think that enforcement truly is the key and the fact that I don't think the public has trust in the fact that the city is going to handle it correctly and enforce it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bob Oliver, you have the floor.
Welcome.
You'll need to unmute yourself, Mr. Oliver.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
My hand was down on my screen.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. I see no other public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We'll close public comment, bring it back to council. Also, Member Coletti.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, I do know a little bit about Measure M and I also know what the city's narrative have, and I'll call it that, has been on quote-unquote complaints. They've always played down the fact or they've always said that there's, due to the lack of complaints, there's not really a problem. That was, that was the narrative even during 2018. We, we're not getting any complaints, so you don't need a vote for Measure M. Obviously, the public felt differently. Obviously, there was a problem that the city was not thoroughly in touch with. And using the, the number of complaints as a metric for whether we are properly enforcing our ordinances, Measure M, et cetera, is, is just a very poor metric and the first reason is, it fundamentally relies on burdening neighbors with the reporting responsibility to enforce the ordinance. We, we are basically having to turn them into, you know, little managers, hotel managers, and whenever there's a problem with the STR next door, they've got to inform us. I think when this was originally discussed, the last time it was brought to council, the idea is that we were going to go solicit input from, and I'm not, one of the options was host compliance, Granicus, that's the provider. And by the way, it was mentioned that you need to buy software, not with Granicus, you don't. You just receive a weekly report of addresses that are currently licensed or advertised, rather, as a short-term rental on the various platforms, Airbnb, V, VBRO, et cetera, et cetera. So there's no software. It's just, it's a report you get once a week. Andrew would get this report once a week listing the addresses of, of the advertised STRs. So that take, that does two things. It gives them a running idea of who's active and it also gives them what the addresses are, so he doesn't have to go find out. Because when you see an ad on Airbnb, it's very difficult, unless you've looked at a lot of them, it's very difficult to know where it's at. You don't have an exact address. You, so you don't really have an exact location. Is it in, in the coastal zone? Is it out? Is it in the commercial district? Is it out? But with the host compliance software, and it's not software, it's actually just a report, with a host compliance subscription, you get a list of all the active addresses that are advertising on the platforms. That's, you know, that's like $9,000, somewhere around there and you know, the check register is an interesting thing. I was looking through the check register and the city manager authorized a purchase order for, I think, $25,000 for a, a reporting site called Zen City. It was, innumerable emails on this and Zen City, they go out and they look at, you know, the webpages for newspapers and social media platforms, Facebook, et cetera. They generate reports and they send them to you. Well, we're spending $25,000 to monitor so, uh, social media a year. Let's spend $9,000 a year monitoring the short-term rental platforms and I think we need, whether it is host compliance or not, I'm perfectly fine sending this out for an RFQ and seeing who, who, what other people are interested in, in, uh, in bidding or offering their services, but I don't think we can just say business as usual. And that's kind of what this agenda report is saying. Hey, we're not getting a lot of complaints, which has always been the narrative from the city, so we really don't need to do anything. That is not how we ensure the residences, the residents of Pacific Grove that we are truly willing to enforce Measure M. So this morning, after reading this agenda report this morning, I said, okay, I'm just going to go on Airbnb. Went on there, found an illegal short-term rental on the 100th block of 18th Street. Almost instantly. It's been reported, so I don't know if that complaint index has been incremented by one, but you know, it's, it's, you need, you need the data. And I, I, I tend to agree. I don't know if Andrew's time is best spent perusing the websites when you can pay a service to do that for you and send you a report. So I think that's where we need, we need to go, but fundamentally, you know, it's not, we can't burden our, our residents with the reporting responsibility. Let's spend a little money, and it is a little money, $9,000 or so for Granicus. Let's spend a little money to generate the report and then act on that once we receive it. So I think, I just think we need to move forward on this and I don't think Eric, or I don't think the status quo is good enough. We've been talking about this for a long time. It's been, you know, it's been two years, over two years since, almost two years since measuring was enacted and we're still not really pursuing the reporting like we should. So I hope we will. Thank you.
Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the work that went to, into exploring, you know, having this extra tool for staff, you know, as, as most other cities do. Um, you know, I too have concerns regarding the number of complaints in 2020 and 2021. Um, in the agenda report, I mean, we have been in a pandemic the last 18 months and traveling has been, you know, severely impacted, so. Yeah, I, I do have a question with regards to the workflow chart. On 3A, can you describe how our code compliance officer collects the, this evidence?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Adams. When a complaint is received in our office, generally by Andrew, Code Enforcement Officer, he follows up, he will go to the site, he'll try to contact the whoever's allegedly committing the, the complaint or the issue that has received the complaint and makes notification to that, to the, both the person who's creating the complaint and the complainant. So following that, 3B is sending letters and trying to follow up with whoever it is that is potentially at fault in, you know, code enforcement.
So Andrew goes and collects the evidence. It's not provided by the person who's making the complaint or expected for that person to provide evidence?
There, that I, well, I think there's a difference between what we're calling evidence and an assertion of potential code enforcement issue. So typically, the complainant is providing in a letter or an email or, or a phone call, a complaint about a certain, you know, neighbor doing something or, or some potential enforcement issue. And it's up to Andrew to verify whether or not the complaint is actually a code violation or is it just a civil matter or is it just neighbors don't like each other? And that's how he follows up.
Got it. Thank you. And then, so with regards to residents who have submitted complaints, let's say, for example, that their complaint was closed because there wasn't evidence, do we follow up with them like a month later or two months later, just to sort of see how things are going or if they've noticed additional renting or, or anything else to, to follow up on?
I don't believe so. And just, just to be clear, this table is, is any kind of code complaint. It's not specific to SDRs. This is our standard enforcement chronology and what code enforcement follows for, for any, any alleged.
Okay, okay. I, I mean, I, I know for me, something that I've heard from residents is really that, you know, that burden is put on them, whether it's a picture or what is the address or, you know, where's the noise exactly coming from? And you know, I mean, I think that that's a lot to ask for our residents, especially, you know, over this amount of time. And quite frankly, it's intimidating, you know, to, to be asked to go and look at the placard and, you know, did you call the number on the placard? It's like, hmm, you know, it's dark and I can't see the phone number and you know, I think that that's a, an unrealistic expectation to, to sort of ask our residents to, to self-monitor and, you know, kind of proactively, you know, manage potential short-term rentals on their, on their block. I, I really do believe and know that having this automated reporting will improve our customer service in general with code compliance because it will free up that time of, of trying to, to discover the address of where the complaint was. And also will help eliminate some of the burden that falls on neighbors of illegal short-term rentals. You know, our STR program has consistently been complaint-driven and, you know, it is time, I, I agree with Councilmember Coletti, like it's time that we need to take these steps to not only support our residents, but also support our staff. It's a small amount of money. I'm happy to do both. I, I think I saw on the summary, it's, it's like 13,000 if we do some additional staff costs in this three to 4,000 range and then, you know, 9,000 for the annual membership at a automated software. So, you know, we're talking under 15,000 for a whole year, like a thousand and change a month. So for me, that small investment is just, it's, it's a given and it's just a year. Try it. Doesn't work out, you know? There's no commitment and, but, but I have a feeling that that it will help, you know, it, it will help to have that list of identified addresses. That's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Peduri.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for the staff for compiling this information. One of the things I noticed is that the, the final end result is actually consistent with what the Monterey County Grand Jury Report had provided, which is essentially, there's no software out there that is a kind of suffice for this purpose. Usually when I see, when I prob, when we think of like staff and providing software to staff, typically the responses that we get is we're getting new software. That is great. It will benefit us. But in this case, it's the exact opposite. The recommendation says that the staff is actually not, the software is actually not going to help the staff. Uh, it's actually, there are more for the summary report. The officer is still required to search through data to confirm if the data is correct or accurate. Uh, and so to me, that indicates that this is going to consume more staff time and potentially for no possible purpose. Uh, so I actually am in supportive of staff's recommendation that we leave things a status quo.
Councilmember Tom Luntz.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'll try to be brief. I, I think that it is, we've heard this item time and time again. I think there is certainly appetite from some of my colleagues to have this software. So I think we can go ahead. I, I, I'd be supportive of trying the software. I think I've said that before as well. Um, I would like it to go out to RFP. I would like Ms. Hunter and her staff to be able to decide which software looks best to her. I would encourage you to try to get a deal in the sense of like three months of a trial free and then you're, and, and if you like it, then you purchase it. You know, ask for those types of things in the RFP if you can, or as you're negotiating for, for whom you're going to select. And I also would like from, I think the Code Enforcement Officer Andrew has been talked about a lot and I asked the city manager, how do we prioritize his time? And he's one guy and he's got a lot of stuff to enforce and there's a list of, I don't know, it's like A through G or I or something like that. And right smack in the middle is short-term rentals. So it may be time, and I think that was from, for, I mean, 2016 or so, that list. So it may be time for us, this is sort of, sort of for the city manager, that we would bring that back and as council, make sure that we have it in the order. My lights just went off automatically, sorry. But that we have it in the order that we want, you know, because there, the, there's at least five items on the list for Andrew to hawk that are above short-term rentals. And when you're one guy with, with a big job like that, council should be giving the type of direction that we all agree on of where his, what his limited resource should be and where he should be spending it. And from what I'm hearing, everybody kind of wants this more towards the top of the list, but there are other things above it at the moment. So maybe that's stale and we need to revisit that. And so, yeah, I, I'm happy to support going out for an RFP to get the software and, and having it come back to council so we can hear all of its glory and how much it's going to cost and, and approve it. So thanks.
I endorse the suggestions made by prior council members, Tom Luntz and, and McAdams. I think it sounds, it makes sense to me, go out for an RFP, it's, it's relatively small amount of money and I, getting extra data that, aside from the cost, the staff just has to read the data. So I don't, don't see how this impacts or adds staff time except if they decide to act on it. And I, I think we should have the data for a while and then come back to council and give us an assessment. Was it worthwhile? I, I'd like to know, again, how many complaints? Complaints, are they official complaints or are they just? Anyone that calls in or sends an email? Is that included in the number of complaints? I'm also wondering what council or what staff's opinion is of using the data, whether, if you just go randomly down the list and pick, you know, three or four addresses and go investigate, do they come up with nothing? Or if you pick three or four addresses and out of that handful, do you find actually there is an illegal short-term rental? So I'm, I'm in support of taking the next step, this one. And without further ado, Councilmember Emilio.
Thank you. In regards going up for the RFP, you know, I asked Allison Hunter there. When you go out for the RFP, can it be, I kind of agrees, they give a three-month trial period? Does some organizations only go, can we just tell them, hey, let's see what you do in six months? rather than going a whole year? See, see how much, are you aware of anything like that, Ms. Hunter?
I'm through the mayor. I'm not aware of anything specifically with these, this, these types of vendors, but I think just generally speaking, when we're preparing an RFP, we can indicate there that we are interested in perhaps a trial period of a certain amount of time. I think we could work that in, probably.
I, I would be supportive of that trial period. I think they, you know, if they want the business, they're going to give us a trial period. And whether that's three months trial period or five months trial period, because someone mentioned, I think it was Councilmember McAdams mentioned, you know, the COVID situation. We're kind of coming, I hope we're kind of coming out of it, but that's a big question mark with the Delta variant. So, but that's my, my thing. If, if we can get a trial period, why not try it?
Councilmember Coletti.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I perfectly understand what Councilmember Amelia was asking for, and I, I would love to kick the tires and, you know, and pay as little as possible. Have, you know, have the taxpayer spend as little possible on a, on an initial trial. But, you know, the STR renting cycle is, is just that, it's a cycle. And I think, to be fair, to, to really evaluate a given program or reporting, you would want, you'd want to try it over at least a year, I would think, or very close to it. I, as I recall, host compliance only offers yearly subscriptions. They don't prorate it, kind of like as a, but if we're going to give it a shot, I think we should give it a fair test. And a fair test probably means all the seasonal variabilities for, you know, tourism, basically, people coming to Pacific Grove to rent short-term rentals. So, I, I do have a, so that, that's my concern on that. I do have a question though. So for, how is, what's the RFP process like? Director Hunter, is this something you contact the vendors with and send them an RFP, or, or is it something you plan on noticing and then letting them respond somehow? How's that going to work out?
Typically, we staff would prepare the RFP and post it on the city's website in what, you know, for one location. And then, since we do have a variety of vendors already that we've either talked to or other local jurisdictions have recommended, or, you know, have some experience with, we can mail, you know, we can invite people to participate in the RFP, but we do have to make it a public, publicly available so that it's fair and transparent.
Sure. No, absolutely. I, I think doing both would be important because there's, there's a good chance some vendor won't see our posting. So if we've got a list of, and we've identified some vendors, I would, I would think we want to post it, like you say, which is probably a requirement. And then also, send it to the, the various vendors that you have identified, just to be sure that it's on everyone's radar. Thank you.
Director Hunter, we've provided, council's provided direction. Are you good with that? We don't have a motion, so. Are we good?
Yes, I feel like I have adequate direction to get Andrew back to work.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now move on to item twelve C, which is fourth quarter budget report. And Director Hannah, welcome back. You're muted.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the public and council. I wanted to share some results, and they are preliminary in nature of the fourth quarter activities of fiscal year 2021. Just to give you an overview where we are in the process, we're going to share with you some information on the general fund as well as the enterprise funds at this time. I want to note that this information is preliminary in nature. The city closes their books on August thirty-first, and we accrue back revenues through August for services that occurred in, in June thirtieth. And in relation to expenses, if expenses were incurred in June and we did not receive the bill to July or August, we will be putting, we will be applying them to the appropriate fiscal year. Where we are right now is our auditors are actually out on site this week. What we had pending at the time this report was produced was some final reconciliations primarily related to grants. And that was probably mostly from the AS, the ASBS grant. And also capitalizations of assets in the enterprise funds, and interest allocation, and investment fair market value adjustments. And there has been a fair market value adjustment and interest allocation change since we have created that report. And I'll share that with you when we're going through the financial statements for the general fund. The final numbers and the audited financials will be available in December and January. Right now, I don't anticipate any significant differences. I do anticipate that there's going to be a fair market value adjustment in, in most likely, the, the enterprise fund that was still pending. And I want to say, in the sewer fund, it could be probably close to sixty thousand dollars. I have not looked at that amount yet, but in relation to the overall balance, that's not going to have that significant impact. Just to share with you maybe a, a quick look back. At the beginning of last, is, beginning of fiscal year 2021, it was just the beginning of COVID nineteen. We had three months of information in preparing the budget. We knew that we were going to have to come back and make some adjustments throughout the year. And there was still, and there was still so much uncertainty. And even looking at TOT through the fiscal year, we actually were on a trajectory going close to normal at one point. And then we had a setback in the winter months when there was more restrictions placed on, on travel. So with that, to give you an idea of where we landed, we did, we, we did come out very well. As the mayor mentioned earlier, we are coming in with a, a positive fund balance, and we are coming in within our reserve levels. And just to share with you some of the things that have changed over the year. At the beginning of the adopted budget, we were projecting twenty-one million dollars in revenue and just over twenty million dollars in operating expenses. And just looking at those two, because those are the ones that have changed the most. At mid-year or during the year, we amended the budget to say that we would be getting twenty-two point five million dollars in revenues. And if you recall, we reduced the furlough from ten percent to five percent, affecting the oper, an increase in the operating expenditures. At that time, we were being fiscally prudent and have, trying to retain a fund balance of about seven point seven, seven point eight million dollars. Well, we've seen some pretty significant revenue performance that has come in primarily in sales tax and a, a couple of the other revenues, and I'll share those in more detail. In relation to operating expenditures, we did have some significant savings, and I'll talk about that a little bit more. The adjustment I spoke of is post-audit report. I wanted to make sure that at the very end, I tied out to, to Ms. Pope's ending fund balance for the general fund. And we're projecting to end the year at nine point four million dollars. And looking at where that would put us in twenty-one, twenty-two, it places us within our reserve levels. Our reserve levels, even with the adjustments for the operating carryforwards, would be nine point one million dollars, which puts us three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars above our reserve limits. And this is just a, a chart that kind of, that shows the history of our fund balance and how it's gone over the last, the last few years. And you can see where we've been able to maintain around nine point three to nine point five, even though we had the pandemic impacting our revenues. And largely, it was because of the proactive results that council had taken in keeping the budget in alignment and modifying it as needed. And this was also mentioned by the state as the city of Pacific Grove was considered one of the, the cities that could weather the pandemic. On the general fund revenues, I'll touch upon property taxes, sales tax, and TOT tax in separate slides. But some of the other surprises occurred in the franchise and utility tax. Franchise taxes, the refuse tax went up, up by a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And we were a little bit surprised on that because we did check with them at the beginning of the fiscal year for their rate of increase. And they had said it's, it's also due to increased usage as well as the increase that we're seeing this higher number. And also, it increased in gas and electricity as well, that's contributing to that additional amount. In financial circles, there's some discussion as to whether or not this trend will continue, or if it's more a result of the, of a work-at-home economy. So these, again, are numbers that we'll be watching throughout the year. The intergovernmental revenues are primarily related to grants. And in this fiscal year, there would be corresponding expenditures in relation to the reduction of the grant revenues. And we've also had some significant increases in charges for services. If you look even over the prior year, some of those increases were, were largely due to zoning and zoning enforcement efforts, parking meters, and we also went in very conservative with recreation revenues, and we did see about a forty-two thousand dollar increase over our, our budget. And looking at property tax trends, one of the things to note is that we are coming in at eight point two million. That's seven point three percent or five hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. When you look at the history of our property tax, you can see regular increases, but none of them were as significant as this, as this increase. We looked at some of the trends and over five years, it's, it's been closer to six percent or three hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. And so this is something that we can also look forward into, into the next fiscal year. Sales and use tax trends, it surprised us in coming in three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars higher than the budget, budgeted amount. And what you can see in prior years is we had a lot of timing differences when you look at the numbers. But if those were all smoothed out, on average, it would be closer to three point eight or three point nine million dollars when you take in some of the timing difference for payments. So in looking at fiscal year 2021, we did recover, and our fourth quarter results were pretty significant. In taking a look at those fourth quarter results, you can see that our revenues for the fourth quarter in June, which is the, the blue line, is, is just as high as the nineteen-twenty first quarter. And in other months, you can see that we're trending just below the eighteen-nineteen levels for the most part. But this quarter, we're actually above it. We had contacted HDL, our sales tax consultant, because we wanted to understand if this is something that we can continue to count on. And because we also compared our projections with theirs. And in doing so, some of the things that they shared with us is that when, that they were predicting as well as, as, as we were, that there would be an, an increase coming up, but not as steep as an increase as what occurred. Some of the other things is that there was some late payments as well. But in general, they said like, like for the district tax, that new and used cars purchased increased thirty-nine percent and twenty-seven percent over the, over the forecast results, because they also look at it at that level. And they also said construction, which we've also seen in some of our building costs, construction materials have increased originally projected at twelve percent, but they shot up to thirty-one percent in that quarter. So these are some of the factors that went into this larger increase. And just to share with you on a quarterly basis, on average, it looks like we were close to two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars with the, with the true-up that comes in with each quarter. In this quarter, it was actually four hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. And so that, that really surprised us, and we wanted to know what was that. So we feel good that at least we have an answer for it. And they're going to share with us some more details at our next meeting with them. Transit occupancy tax, on the other hand, it did not perform, it, it met our budgetary amounts, but it did not increase into the prior year levels. And we knew that because we did have some declines in December or January, where some of our revenues were just above a hundred thousand dollars or less in, in those months. And in looking at June, we had projected that June would be a little bit higher, that your trajectory would rise by maybe about seventy-eight thousand dollars more in the summer, which is typical. We didn't see that. But we did see a significant return in August, and we were also noticing that the major conference center is beginning to, to hold more, more conferences. So that may be an influencing factor for this next fiscal year. On the expenditure side, just highlighting some of the changes, the city council budget originally had a full funding for a year of a transparency consultant, and those funds weren't used. As well as due to COVID, some of the trainings and meeting money wasn't used as well in some of the consultant services. Similar in the city manager's office, some of the consultant services were, were not used, as well as there was some changes in, in training money as well. Finance and IT, there's going, there's, as part of Ms. Pope's presentation, we're requesting approximately, I would say, twenty thousand dollars in carryforwards for finance software updates. And we're requesting, I believe it's close to sixty, seventy thousand dollars in IT. The IT funds. Public Works has some savings primarily in consulting services as well as services and supplies. And community development was primarily contract services associated with the building services contract, and also some of the grant contracts. And they also had some transitions of positions in the director and the senior program manager position that resulted in some salary savings. Year-over-year, there is some differences in library, at, library and recreation, and that's primarily due to COVID nineteen. So I thought I'd just share this slide with you. We looked at, at it during the budget planning session. Our salaries did stay on, on mark with projections. And just showing that the impact of the furlough, you can see it year-over-year on the blue portion of the, of the bar chart. And then the green portion reflects the unfunded liability payment. The enterprise funds, these are preliminary fund balances that you see. And revenues for the local water project were close to one point two million, but six hundred thousand dollars of that represented a transfer from the sewer fund as far as an inter-fund loan. The net difference was four hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. However, that still resulted in a minor thirty-seven thousand dollar negative fund balance that we'll need to look at in the next fiscal year. Cemetery performed much significantly greater than it has in the past, and we attribute that possibly to COVID nineteen and advanced planning. Revenues exceeded expenditures by a hundred and ninety-one thousand, resulting in a preliminary fund balance of two hundred and fifty-three thousand. The sewer fund, we, you can see that expenditures exceeded revenues, but that is a planned drawdown. The sewer fund had a ten year reach study, and those funds are set up to fund capital improvements. So that it is using the fund balance to be consistent with the sewer funding plan. Golf course, pretty much broke broke even. It started out with close to a a negative twenty eight thousand dollars, and it's it's returning at that level. We do anticipate from what we're seeing that we should have revenues in excess of expenditures that should cover that amount, but we'll be watching that through the year. And just to give you an up, an idea of some upcoming financial items, we'll be talking about the additional ARPA fund allocation at the next meeting. That's close to three hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars. And the city manager will be working with the public works director and I to produce like a menu of items which council can consider. Some could include looking at some projects. If you recall, we've also taken money back from vehicle equipment fund where we were setting aside funds to purchase a new fire engine. The fire engine, we can also choose to look at from a whether we want to finance it or whether we want to still continue to put money aside. And then some other items, we are seeing some of our internal service funds coming up a little low at the end of the year, and that's primarily due to the rise in unemployment costs that we had in the employee benefits fund. And an additional true up payment we had to pay to to ParsAC that was unanticipated. Both of those items should be under fifty thousand dollars each, but just those could be some items that are placed out there. Council may also consider if they want to do something with that three hundred thousand dollars potentially above the reserve levels. And then also coming back at the next council meeting, we're going to be bringing forward the local preference ordinance, along with consideration of some minor adjustments to the credit card and travel policy. First quarter financial report will be coming up. And then December and January, we have or January, we'll have the independent auditor auditor's report. And in the new calendar year, we'll be coming quickly up with a five year forecast and the midyear report. And so with that, I conclude my presentation.
Do we have any public comment?
I do not see any hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Cluddy.
Thank you, Your Honor. Wow, that was a that was a lot of encouraging news to see so much, you know, done on reducing expenditures and to see all these positive balances is really is excellent. As sales tax revenue especially, I was I was very impressed with I. You know, I can remember a couple of years ago, the the doom and gloom predictions, how sales tax would drop off significantly, and that doesn't look like it happened at all. The and of course, because there are a lot of factors involved. So it's not just, it's it's very difficult to predict these things, I guess. In your enterprise fund, your your horizontal bar chart, were the expenditures in the sewer enterprise fund, did they reflect the loan that was made to the water project?
Yes, they do carry the six hundred thousand dollars loan to the water project.
Okay, so one shows an expenditure and the other shows it as a revenue.
Yes, from an operating statement standpoint, they would at year end, those would be converted. But right now, from a budgetary standpoint, yes.
Great. The so I'll I'll echo what the mayor said early also that the fund balance of nine point four million dollars is really good news. I do have a question about the number of full time employees that we have budgeted to bring on in unfilled F T Es. Do you have that available, Director Hannah?
I do not have the number of unfilled F T Es. I'm looking to see if our H R director is is on the line right now, but I do not have the unfilled F T E at this point.
Okay, I guess. This is really good news. I want to hang on to this good news as long as possible. So maybe we counsel, we need to consider perhaps looking at how and when and why we would we would fill those F T Es. So I would like to get more information about that. The number of outstanding unfilled F T Es and what kind of discretion we could maybe exercise and whether they would be filled this year or not.
And just for clarification, and I and I see the city manager is on the line. None of the positions that were previously frozen, so to speak, are frozen at this point.
They're still frozen.
No, they're not frozen. They're they're unfrozen, and from what I understand, the H R director has recruited for those positions. It just could be if there were some transitions in regular staffing, there could be some temporary vacancy, so to speak.
Well, I guess that's the question I've got is how many unfilled F T Es there are and whether there's still some, I'll follow up on that. We can't answer that right now, obviously, so I'll follow up on that. You mentioned that you're kind of consulting with H D L to kind of understand how this, you know, extra or what it looked like extra money came in for sales tax. Can you kind of give me an idea whether they've been beneficial in actually getting us acquiring more sales tax? Or we just are we just go to them as a consultant and just kind of use them as just to answer questions? Or have they actually structured our sales tax collections in such a way? I know we signed a contract with them a while back. Have they structured our sales tax collection to to actually increase revenues?
Well, actually, the state is the collector of our of the tax revenues. So they will get involved with the reporting of what they have, and they help look for maybe possibly discrepancies. Like maybe about, I would say, six times a year, I might get something that's an authorization for them to audit for a particular item that does not seem right. So in that respect, they do look at it, but they from a collection standpoint, it's really the state state if we have questions like for instance, when Andronicos came in, we wanted to make sure that the allocation was appropriate. They're kind of our liaison to the state to make sure that it is allocated appropriately.
You're right. I mean, the C D T F A is responsible for the collection. But I think when we did our contract with H D L, we kind of, we made it a little more broad so that they would actually be doing some of these audits that you talked about. Have so have we done some of the audits and had they increased revenues a result?
Yes, I want to say that I I can't say the exact amount, but I will say that there has been six audits that have resulted in some changes, but I don't have the amounts handy.
Okay, okay, thank you very much. We'll follow up. The you know, speaking of the C D T F A, all this great news, or you know, I I would say most of it's good news is and we didn't even get our, you know, half cent sales tax implemented. So I think the future is looking fairly good. Are you aware that the Calper Calper's discount rate has decreased recently? And what what kind of impact do you think that will have on our annual valuation statements?
Well, it won't be on our next annual evaluation. We did. I did hear about the increase, and we did look at some numbers. And at that particular point, because they had a good good reach, some good returns, it just means the good returns that would have benefited us more is not going to benefit us at the end. We would usually get a better, a better percentage of returns to help offset in the assets in the Calpers portfolio. But because it triggered that threshold that they have, then it's it's just not going to be as good as we would have expected. So for a rate perspective, we don't see that much change. It's just not as as good as an amount that we would get the benefit from.
Excellent. Thank you for that explanation. I and one final question, it is something that I've noticed on our advanced agendas. It's come and gone. It still hasn't made its way before council yet. And that regards the local water project. I believe we were going to have some kind of financial slash operating audit. Is there a timeline on that?
I I would look to the city manager, but from what I understand, and the public works director and I have received a proposal from a firm, and we are planning to bring that proposal back.
Any, okay. In the next quarter, next three months.
I I I'm looking to the city manager, but I would say within the next month.
Okay, super. Excellent. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Awesome. Councilmember Pedory.
Thank you, Mayor. And Tori and and team really fantastic effort to keep us all in a steady position. I'm really happy to see that we are meeting and exceeding the reserve here. And there's certainly the future looks much more brighter now. So thank you. I I really had a small question. It it was noted that the city attorney, the legal costs were eighty eight thousand more than anticipated, and the reason was it was attributed to expanded use of attorney services. Does this mean additional attorneys, or is it just the nature of the contract? How 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 did that eighty eight thousand come into play?
It would be that we used more services than we anticipated. There is a basic fee for the attorney, a city attorney agreement. And then there's some additional fees that are based on hourly rates. And so in that instance, we would have been using the attorney services more than we had anticipated.
And so that is for for the contract?
Yes, yes, it is. It it does have an hourly rate associated with it. So we would be, we would be using the services up to that hour. There is no cap on the contract.
Okay, got it. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Emilio.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, thank you. Season and your varsity team. It's nice to see how how well it's always a pleasure to go through the that with you and your in your team. I compliments to you in that. The question I had was, and I usually ask these questions before. I'm sorry for I didn't, but you you know, the property taxes, you had an item on property taxes. So that encompasses all property taxes for the two, two questions, actually. That encompasses all the property taxes in the city of Pacific Grove. Is that correct? Then I have another question after that. Is that? That's right, right? All the property taxes.
That that is correct. It would be, it's a combination of secured, unsecured taxes. And it also includes what the state is now classified as property tax in lieu of of vehicle fees. The only item that is not in that list is real estate transfer tax. And we contacted the assessor regarding that amount because if you look at the change, we were typically getting around a hundred and eleven thousand a year. And we actually doubled that this year. And so again, we called them and said, hey, what, why are we seeing this? Is this is this correct? Is there something else in here? And it was again, the response that property tax, property sales are just increasing, have just increased by that much.
Okay, that's that was my, actually, you just answered my same question. Anybody familiar with the property in City of Grove? I mean, when they sell X million dollars, their property taxes go up from that. You just answered that question. So, okay, thank you, Tori and your crew.
Councilmember Tomlinson.
Thank you, Mayor, and I just wanted to echo, thank you, Tori and your team. And I I really just, not only do I love the all the work that you do, but the way that you present it in such a clear and concise way. And so I appreciate that. I don't have any questions to receive the report, so thank you so much.
I'll echo the thanks to the excellent report. And one of the things that's that really struck me is the detail on the capital projects. So that tells us very quickly how much or how many of our capital projects were completed this this past year. So I just have a suggestion, and more so for our city manager is looking at capital projects. By far, the most monies are spent on our sewer collection system. And I'm not sure that this council, myself excluded, has ever had an update of our ten year sewer collection system financial plan from two thousand fifteen. That even predates Mr. Harvey. So I think we're just beginning year seven of this ten year plan, so we're we're more than due for status update on that. So we appreciate you enlightening us later. Um, this is to receive the report. So without further comment, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Tomlinson, you have your hand up.
I think that item's over, right, Mayor? So I wanted to make a suggestion that we move to closed session and we move the other items thirteen A and B. And yeah, thirteen A and B to the next meeting. If they're not time sensitive.
Well, the the item council goals and strategies just delays further. This was an item, an outgrowth from discussions on city manager performance evaluation process. So is it time sensitive? No, it just delays that discussion.
Well, in, I guess my my question is the the closed session, was it intended to be an hour starting at ten or were we intending? What is the timeline for that? Is Elizabeth Hall available past ten? I'm just wondering about timing, that's all. I'm happy to to do whatever items we want to do.
Mr. Harvey, I think that question's yours.
Thank you, Councilmember Tomlinson, through the mayor. Ms. Hall is available to go beyond ten. I don't think that we really need a huge amount of time for a closed session. Though I think we could adjourn and move into that. That's a pleasure of the council and probably move through the business quickly if the council so desires. She is ready to go, as is the city attorney.
Mayor Pro Tempore Smith.
Thank you, Your Honor. I I don't know if Councilmember Tomlinson made a motion, but I've moved to adjourn to close. I moved to adjourn to close now.
I second.
Okay, well, I'll let me modify that. We're we're not I'm not sure technically we're adjour- adjourning the open session. We are more appropriately continuing the remaining open session items to the next meeting. Is that okay? Councilmember Tomlinson and Mayor Pro Tempore Smith.
Yes, sir.
I'm sure what the procedure on that is, Your Honor, but I I'm fine with going to closed session, so.
Okay, well, I'm not sure. Well, I'll have to debate that with our city attorney, whether you adjourn a session or not. Nevertheless, let's have a vote.
Ms. Kendall, you're in.
Thank you, Mayor Peak.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith.
Aye.
Councilmembers Emilio.
Aye.
Paletti.
Aye.
McAdams, I believe, is no longer at the meeting. Pedory. And Tomlinson.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero one with Councilmember McAdams absent.
Right, well, now here, item fifteen A, this is a closed session item. It's conference with real property negotiators, portions of Sloane Avenue and Oceanview Boulevard, city negotiators. Mr. Harvey and Mr. Laredo and Ms. Hall from Best Bestin Krieger, negotiating parties. Deborah Guiler and Mike Zimmerman under negotiation. Deborah Geiler and Mike Zimmerman under negotiation price in terms of payment. Do we have any public comment?
I do see one hand raised. Mr. Mayor. Bob Oliver, you have the floor. Mr. Oliver, you'll need to unmute.
I'm sorry, again, my my hand says it's lowered right now.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, now adjourn to closed session. And our city clerk has provided a new link for that closed session. So if everyone would please go to your email and activate that link.